Neil Kuhn. Thank you. I live at eight oh six Sudbury Court in Greystone. I've been a resident of Elon for eighteen years now and love Elon. It is dear to my heart. I may speak from two standpoints, one as a Christian minister retired, and second as a citizen of the United States. I believe from my faith that God has created all people in God's image and that they are precious to God and that we need to reflect that in our behavior, the ways we treat one another. I also believe that as a United States citizen, following the ideal of the Declaration of Independence, that God has, that all people are created equal and that God has endowed us with certain inalienable rights to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. That's all people. And when I see the Jewish Worship Center a couple of years ago burned, firebombed, and see a parade of trucks running through town, I know that we have a long ways to go as a community. Not, I don't want to denigrate Elon. I think it's wonderful, but our culture, it's so easy for hatred and discrimination to come out. And I think that if our Board of Aldermen and the town itself were able to say, "We do not tolerate discrimination on any basis, that all people are precious and we're to love all people." That's basically what I want to say. I hope that we can work on and pass a non-discrimination ordinance for the town of Elon, making it an even more wonderful place to live. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening and thank you, Mayor and board members. My name is Phil Smith. I do business at one twelve North Williamson Avenue. I live in Burlington at two seventeen Shatterbrook Drive. I've had a small business downtown Elon for seven years and I don't have a lot to say other than I wanted to say that I do believe that such an ordinance would speak volumes as to the fact that people of all types are welcome in downtown Elon, welcome to come to our businesses and that their rights will be protected as guests, as employees, as those driving by. And I support this as a downtown business owner.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Kennedy Boston. I currently live on campus at Elon University.
She's on the sign up list. I don't think she's on the sign up list to speak. What's your name again?
Kennedy Boston. And like I said, I currently reside on campus, so I'll have to beat my campus box. It is one six two eight eight campus box at Carolina. And I'm actually from Greensboro, funny enough. Elon has never been a far cry from where I'm from. And growing up as a black woman and then eventually realizing I was bisexual on top of that, this ordinance means a lot to me. This ordinance means walking around safely on campus at night and being able to know that I am protected in some way or that the next time, if we have the unfortunate see of a convoy coming through and I'm standing there again, because I was there and I have to hear the horrid things that people are screaming at me, I'm still protected at some level. This ordinance doesn't just mean something to be a trailblazer for. This is real people that we're talking about. This is real lives. The trauma that I experienced actually from that convoy has still shaken me to my core and I'm actually on the verge of tears now just remembering it. And the lack of protection that I felt in that moment and the fear that I had will never go away. But I can only hope that if we pass this ordinance and if we do this and we do set that trail and we do actually protect these small people, even the students who maybe only here for four years, that somebody next down the line, another black bisexual woman on campus won't have to undergo the same thing that I went through that day or that they can feel safe walking around at night on campus as I've had many times where trucks have yelled many things at me as I unfortunately do present as very queer. I have four facial piercings. It's a little hard to hide sometimes, but it's really important though that I still be able to walk around or that anybody be able to walk around this campus or this town at night and not know or not feel like they might be discriminated or yelled at or anything happen to them. This ordinance means a lot and I hope you do pass it.
Someone else would like to speak?
My name is Matthew Carter. My address is two two four Foster Drive, Elon. I grew up in Elon, went to NC State for undergrad and will be attending Elon Law this fall. So needless to say, I have a pretty vested interest in Elon and the community growing up here and I love it. That being said, as someone previously mentioned in our declaration, it says, "All men are created equal." I think this ordinance is simply a small step and doubling down on that and saying, "Hey, as a community, we'll provide the legal measures to ensure that everybody's treated equally." So that being said, I hope that y'all vote in favor of this ordinance and I'd love to see us kind of, as the mayor said, be on that cutting edge and be at the front of this. Thank y'all.
Someone else would like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. My name is Randy Orwig. I'm the pastor at Elon, one of the pastors at Elon Community Church, United Church Christ. Live at eleven White Oak Street in Elon and have been pastor there for a little over ten years. And in that time, I have been a part of the downtown community, mostly in terms of watching and being a part of the businesses and watching and see what the employees look like and those kinds of things. And I think one of the things that you need to understand is is that as an inclusive church, we receive members who are gay, lesbian, who are transgender. And we've had some transgender youth in our congregation who I've helped to get employment. And I actually will not speak of the business that was in Elon that hired this person for about a matter of three hours and then let them go. I would say that if there was a non-discrimination ordinance, maybe there could have been something, could have been dealt with. But when you don't have those kinds of ways of dealing with it, it just is an unfortunate moment. I'm just asking you all to strongly consider my friend, my good friend and colleague, James Wilks, who's the pastor at First Baptist here in Elon as well, who, when we were having a discussion one time when we were dealing with some anti-racism issues, of course, that has been going on in the last year. He shared, "It would be really nice if when we walk into a business, we feel like we're seen." And there's a lot of ways of being seen and we can get into that, but it just doesn't go when there's nothing being said. There's nothing, when there's nothing being done. I'll just finish by saying, it's always good to go back to the vision statements and the words that are shared about the community of Elon. There's always this sense that we take great pride in this community and that we want to be a part of something very special and unique. Well, if we're only worried about how many other communities haven't done this yet, that's going to be a problem. Because if we really are unique and we really are something that wants to, a community that wants to be true to itself and really be a unique place, then we need to pass this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else would like to speak?
And all. I'm Susan Brown. I live at two eleven East Summerdale and have for forty years. I'm an Elon grad and I would like to support all the other speakers who have said that are, we as citizens of the town of Elon that the Town Board of Aldermen create and pass this non-discrimination ordinance, which will bring peace and beauty to this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else would like to step forward?
I'm Lena Kennedy. I live at six five four Spanish Oak Road here in Elon. I'm also a professor of scholarship at the university and for about five years, my husband, I've been residents of this community for about five years. We nearly didn't move to Elon. I nearly didn't take the job at Elon because I was questioning in 2016 whether or not we wanted to return to North Carolina after the passage of HB two in response to Charlotte's non-discrimination ordinances. That was a big question for us. We had left North Carolina for a long time and thought about coming back. We were hesitant to move to a more rural part of the state, to a part of the state where our elected officials had supported that legislation, but decided to take a risk on it because the research shows that in order to have thriving communities, it really values to have members who live, work, and play in the same community. So it was important to us that we weren't commuting in. But we seriously considered, one, whether we want to come back to North Carolina and two, whether we want to pay twice as much to live in Durham because we felt it would be a more inclusive community than we might find here. We chose to take that risk and we've been happy with our choice, which I'm glad to say. But had there been an affirmative statement like a non-discrimination ordinance in the community, it would have made us a lot more comfortable early on. As I talk to new faculty coming into the university, those that don't necessarily look like a typical Elon family or a typical Alamance County family, sometimes are nervous about moving here just as we were and do choose to spend twice as much to move to the triangle because they perceive it as more inclusive. I suspect that if we had this ordinance, we could, we could keep those families here because there's a lot of benefit to not, to not doing that commute, but we need to make those families more comfortable. I highly encourage you to think about writing and passing this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Someone else?
Hello there. My name is Britt Mobley. I am a student at Elon University and I, I'll give you my campus boxes, one oh eight two five campus box, Elon, North Carolina, two seven two four four. I am, like Jack Corby who spoke earlier, I'm a member of the Student Government Association. I represent the class twenty twenty four as their president. But I don't come to you to speak as the class twenty twenty four president at Elon University. I come to speak to you just as a student, as a resident of Elon. This is, I happen to say, I just finished my first year at Elon. So, not yet. Well, yeah, we still have finals. In terms of classes, we just finished. So, you know, I'm so happy that this year is finally coming to an end. But really, when I first got here, I'm a North Carolina resident. I'm from Raleigh, North Carolina originally, but Elon has become my second home. But it's unfortunate for me and for other students that look like me to be here at Elon, in a more predominantly white space. It is often frightening and honestly confusing to understand why people would yell at us from the side of a sidewalk or yell at us from the road while just while we're walking class or going to meet up with friends. It is, it is unfortunate that I have to experience these things just because of the color of my skin and other people have to experience the same issues because of how they identify, right? I cannot speak for everyone else because I do not identify with everyone else. But as a black man on Elon's campus, I urge you to pass this ordinance. I was a part of the groups that passed our own ordinance with Elon Student Government. And there was a sweeping majority that said that this is something that is important to us and I'm not sure if you guys have received that document yet, but we asked that it be sent to you guys so that you guys can know that we are, we fully support this. And so in that, again, I don't come to you to speak as the class twenty twenty four president, but just as a resident of Elon, that I love this town and I love this country, but it all definitely comes with its criticisms of it. And with that criticism, I say that we have a lot of work to do. And this is very hard work. It's not going to be solved just by one ordinance. It's not going to be solved just by one law. But this would be the first stepping stone for us to continue to make our society more just and to make our society more inclusive to everyone who chooses to be here. So with that, again, I support the ordinance with all of my heart, soul, and mind. And I appreciate you guys having me today. With that?
No worries. Proceeded to the president. You said that it passed by a sweeping majority. Yes. Tell me what some of the dissensions were from the student government?
Um, actually, there were none. The, the only person that decided to vote no just happened to vote no just because everyone else. You know, during our time, we have, you know, our debate time, we debated for about fifteen to twenty minutes. And everyone that came up to say their piece and to say what it thought about our piece of legislation came up and said that they full-heartedly agreed with what we were saying in our piece of legislation and that they support any, any attempt by the town to pass a non-discrimination ordinance. I cannot speak for that one gentleman who said no. I have no reason why he said no. He didn't even come up to speak. He just voted no out of nowhere. But again, the rest of the senators, which it's, there's fifty one of us, so fifty of us said that we agreed. And we represent the entire campus of Elon. So that would be my answer to that.
Put my mask off so you recognize me. It's been a while. Good to see everybody.
Previous member of our board.
My name is John Peterson. I live at one fourteen Georgetown Drive, a former member of the board, twenty-year citizen of the town of Elon, friend to all on this. And I just, I haven't been here since I left. But this was important enough for me to try to get here and at least share with you my perspective on why I think it's so important that we support this ordinance. I won't give you the whole speech on race, but I will say that it's important from a leadership perspective. I understand that there may be questions about the teeth in this ordinance as far as what it means or what could be done. But I think the important thing, at least for me as a former colleague, as a citizen, as a friend and as a black man in the town of Elon, is what it says from a leadership perspective, to be proactive, to be supportive of this non-discrimination ordinance. Again, understanding that we don't know exactly how it will work out as far as the teeth of it and how we will enforce it and those kinds of things. But that's not, that's not the important thing to me. The important thing is trying to show, you know, people, you know, I've been blessed by, you know, socioeconomics and circumstance in a lot of ways. Some of the things that I know happens to black people, not just in our town, but in our country. Sometimes I don't see it every day, but I know it exists. I have no doubt that it exists. And I'm here to, you know, share with you my former colleagues and my friends that it exists. And this is an important thing for us to consider and to adopt because it's affecting people's lives. I won't recount things that I know I've sat in this seat that we've made decisions one way or another that in fact affected people's life. And sometimes we didn't understand because we just didn't see it every day. I remember a conversation about transportation, adopting public transportation. And we didn't know people who would use public transportation. But there are a lot of people who need public transportation. So again, I'm not here to preach or to speak to you about it, but I did want to at least come share from my perspective on how important I think it is based on the experiences I've had sitting where you sit, but also the experience I've had, you know, living in the scan that I live in, in this community and in this country, to just ask it, you know, ask for your support for this ordinance. If you have any questions, like talking separate, I'm open for that.
Thank you. Thank you. So you know, the board will take no action on this tonight. It may come in the future for, but tonight is just discussion. And I think one of the things our board wanted to do is listen to you. I think we have, I would appreciate everything. Board members like to add anything?
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I do think it's important that we, from our last meeting, we wanted to get more information. And I think this is a good stepping stone for getting the next information. And we don't have the teeth of this ordinance yet, what it would look like. So because of this, I would like to move forward with this discussion. Recommend our staff to try to draft up some ordinances so we can look at some teeth, see what it would look like and then discuss how these ordinances would look and if there are something different of these ordinances. Even potentially put together a human rights commission to help us draft this ordinance as a volunteer committee from, from the citizens to help us come together as a community to figure out what is best for us instead of us just putting legislation forward, you know, build it from a groundswell underneath. And also, you know, this, this affects the businesses, right? So I have a list of businesses that have responded to me. But Merckx, Tangent, The Root, Simply Oak, the veterinary hospital next door, the Oak House, Pandora's, they all support us having an ordinance of this nature. And I just want to reiterate that it's extremely important because as a municipality, we're under the framework of the federal government and then the state government and then we have our county government. There's no legal protection for people of the LGBTQ community to be not discriminated against. It kind of sounds weird when you say you're actually allowed to. Austin Supreme Court case, that goes back to what we were speaking about with the bakers in Colorado that wouldn't bake a cake. Now federally, if there's fifteen or more employees, you're not allowed to discriminate based on somebody's gender or sexual orientation. It doesn't have gender identity in it. But that allows that if you have fourteen or below, that it can happen. So us passing this on a local level creates a mechanism to say to the community that we do back them. And out of those businesses, you know, the veterinary hospital has around twelve, I think the Oak House has less employees than fifteen. Simply Oak only has one employee. So technically, legally, they're allowed to say, somebody can come in, "I'm not serving you because you're gay." I don't think anybody wants that in our town. We want equality. So us passing that ordinance, moving towards that notion would just let the community know that we support them and that we're behind them. And I think that as a board, we should try to move forward with the next steps of what does an ordinance look like for our town?
Board members, any comments?
I would just say, you know, too, that, you know, when we look at this and looking at a really inclusive anti-discrimination or whatever we decide to call it ordinance, you know, we're not just talking about, you know, someone who might be homosexual or someone who might be a person of color, but we're also talking about, you know, someone who's pregnant. You know, right now, someone could not be hired because they're pregnant technically. And this ordinance would address that. Someone could, you know, wear a hat that says veteran. And if someone is anti-military, that comes into play in discrimination. You know, we're also saying, well, what about religious belief? Well, if someone were a Christian, but the business owner was not a Christian, then there could be discrimination. So I think that we need to take a very broad approach to this and say that, you know, if we are going to follow our town's values, like Randy said, it seems to me that this falls in line with our town values. And after the occurrences that have happened, not just federally, but even locally on our own streets over the last year, I think that this would say a lot as to what we as a town desire to be. And, you know, I know that it would be easy to say, well, no one really pays attention to those things. But I'll give you an example. So when I worked for the state of West Virginia, part of my job was to implement healthy schools programs. And there was a mother who approached me and she said, "The only reason that we decided to live where we live, being as, you know, high poverty as it was and the other issues that came along with this area of West Virginia," she said, "because this school participated in the healthy schools program." So that is just one example of how something so small that no one ever thought someone would think about when they decide to move to an area. But, you know, as Ms. Kennedy said, you know, that's exactly what she wants when she's deciding to live somewhere. And we, you know, not just because of the non-discrimination aspects of it, but we want to grow. And if we want more residents, we need to really think about, how is, what is our identity? Because how many times have we all heard, "You're just Elon." I've heard it. I'm sure we've all heard it. You can't do that. You're just Elon. You, that's not going to work. You're just Elon. And I've said it before, sitting up here. I think that's why we should do it because we are Elon. And I think we are in a really unique position to take a lead on not just this issue, but a lot of issues that I think would help not just our local community, but our broader community as well.
Other board members?
Oh, some comments as well. I appreciate everybody being here. And as Mr. Ray said, it means a whole lot more to us to hear from you and to hear your perspectives and for us to sit up here and think and try to muse it over and come up with our own thoughts. We all come from different backgrounds and all different experiences. We all bring these filters to what we hear and what we see and what we do. I was not here at the first meeting, so I didn't have the benefit of the first set of comments. I'm not quite ready to move forward. Quinn was trying to draft an ordinance. I'd like to understand a little bit more about some of the things that Mr. Peterson talked about, the teeth. And he wanted to, you know, had a chance to talk. And the idea of a punishment being associated with this, this is something that I'd like to think a whole lot more about before we institute something like that. There's a lot of unknowns for me personally in the business that I work in. I'm subject to a lot of outside interaction and outside opinions. And I know how dangerous, just after I, I know how harmful the wrong comment at the wrong place can be to someone or a business, whether it's a truthful comment, whether it's one made in anger or one for just made off the cuff. So I just want to step very carefully. I think the idea of treating everybody equally is exactly what we want. When I say everybody, I mean, is that everybody? I don't like to parse it personally in too many segments because it's always going to be another segment that you left out. So I just want to be very careful about what we want to be. I want to be thorough and I want it to be precise. For me personally, I'd like to study the law.
I'd like to pose a question. You, you referred to what y'all passed was an ordinance. Was it actually an ordinance or was it a resolution? I'm sorry, it was a resolution. Technically, it has no teeth.
So, yeah, it has no teeth for us.
Are y'all going to approach the Board of Trustees?
They're the governing body, I assume. Yeah, so that is the plan. Granted, we just finished our Senate term, you know, because of finals last Thursday. And so that was, that was the first step of many for, for the university.
All the board members have any comments?
I just want to kind of piggyback on what Davis said. I mean, I've said it.
I mean, I've said at the last meeting that I am one hundred percent against discrimination of any kind. And I think Mayor said too, you have to be careful. We don't want to delineate delineate between any of us. So I I totally against discrimination of any kind. But I do want to make sure from a standpoint of us being least quote unquote, in this situation where if someone goes to a restaurant and is felt like discriminated against, you know, with the the term teeth, we we got to know what we're dealing with. I mean, there's, we've talked on the board, there's no one here that's against or that's for any discrimination. We're all against discrimination completely. I just want to make sure from a standpoint of this being some such a new thing, like was mentioned earlier, only eight municipalities have it throughout throughout the state of North Carolina, that we make sure we're doing the right thing and we're not going to get in indoors box from the standpoint of people coming out and we're having this take over the town staff with complaints and that type of thing. I've been on the board for about fourteen years. I haven't heard any specifics. I'm not saying that discrimination hasn't happened, obviously. I'm in business thirty nine years, I'm not naive to anything like that. But I do, from a from a legal standpoint, the fact that it is an ordinance versus a resolution, there's a big difference there. And and Davis, I want to make sure we're making the right move. This is a very important thing. And I do appreciate everybody's comments and I take them heartfelt. That's one thing I do. I listen to all sides. We should do that and be empathetic with folks. And so I take it very seriously. And part of that being serious is I want to make sure as a municipality that we're doing the right thing and that we cover our bases with fines, the whole nine yards. So that can open up a lot of, a lot of issues potentially. So I do appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I respect everyone's opinion and, you know, I want to say again publicly, I'm against any type of discrimination against anyone.
I like to thank everyone that came out and and made some comments. I think that you heard you loud and clear. I think a lot of things that that I would share has already been mentioned. I think we have to be careful. You can say you're for something and I think if you took a poll, ninety eight percent of our town would say we're against discriminating. And we don't condone it. With that being said, as as you said, I think correctly, Davis, that we have to look at what the consequences are. To say you have an ordinance that has no teeth in it, we have little resources here in the staff standpoint to to hear these complaints and to find someone. I looked at Asheville, I don't know if you've raised Red Ashles. They had formed quite a a large contingency just to hear that and give off offer the to complain it and the person who was accused a chance to be heard. That creates a lot of responsibility on the town on a legal standpoint. So we have to be very careful. Then we had to go slowly in a smart manner. You you talk about segments, me. G B Q started off with a few letters, now it's expanded. There's segmentation that we've never heard of. I mean, after that, and I think what we've got to look at this, how do we look at so includes all people? Not just people identify a certain way. We have to look how we treat all people. We're all the human race. It's not a black race, it's not a white race, it's not an Asian race, we're all the human race. How do we treat everybody fairly? And I think that's what we should be looking at.
And I'm sure all of you people have followed closely, the H B two building, Charlotte. And after that pass, you know, the state legislature came in and said, we can't do that. But that, what they passed away in two years. I talked to a state legislator and they said, we're going to do it again. They're going to make the final decision. The town of Elon is not. I agree with everybody on this board. No one wants to discriminate against anybody. And I've been in this town since nineteen sixty seven. It hadn't been many of y'all been here that long. And I don't think there's that much discrimination. I was at Elon University for thirty thirty nine years. Coach football, coached minorities, recruited the first minorities that came here to play athletics. And all my time there, I've never had a single athlete came up to me and said, Coach, I'm being treated wrong around here. They might have. But I think we just need to move slow. Once you pass an ordinance, it's there. There. And I just worry about enforcement there. If we were to pass a resolution, we'd do that tomorrow.
That was going to be my suggestion that it, in my opinion, that is not a solution, but I would like for us to consider a resolution that includes verbiage that we will explore in ordinance.
I think.
The board's ready to do that. It's obvious, y'all can see very clearly.
Have a resolution in front of us, but could we not have a resolution in place by our next meeting?
Say one.
That supports anti discrimination. Exactly what we're talking about. I mean, last, last month, we all said, oh, we'd all support a resolution. So why don't we have one drafted?
I'll appoint you, Davis, with the town manager, perform some kind of a resolution.
Well, I, you know, I understand us needing to work slowly, right? I I get those sentiments. We'll sit and get ordinances and bundles on a Friday in our agenda packet. And we'll pass them on a Monday. Or this is laws that don't go away. We don't discuss them. We don't ask if what they think about these ordinances that we pass. And they they still have lasting effects, right? And this one should be, and and we go back to the teeth, Mr. Peterson said teeth. Yes, we don't have any teeth in this because we don't have an ordinance drafted. We don't have something that we can look at to see, yeah, that's probably not going to to talk through it. So what are the next steps for us to to talk through it? Is to keep us having something drafted up. Now we can really start talking back and forth of what doesn't work. This might work, but with nothing in front of us other than other municipalities ordinances, there's nothing we can talk about or move forward with this. And we know they weren't. We know we're not going to prevent discrimination. But without the Civil Rights Act of sixty four or the Disabilities Act, all of us up here would be walking in a different door than some people out there. And it works. And so I think this is not about the punitive and we can keep talking about hypotheticals of how how are we going to enforce it or what happens if this happens, this, the noise ordinance? We can have hypotheticals all day about that, right? But get passed quickly with with an instance of that. So I think it's more, instead of talking about how we can't figure this out, it's like, we need to talk about how we can figure out how to make this work. And it's more about the symbolism and leading the way. And I think one of the the speakers said, being the beacon beacon of light. We can be, we have national recognition because of the global institution in our backyard. We could be a college town done right and work towards this. So if, I'm not saying let's put an ordinance in front of us and let's vote on this in June. But I think the next steps for us to move forward is deal with the community and to get a human rights commission committee together to help draft some ordinances with the help of our county attorney and our town staff. And it is going to require staff with an ordinance, right? It's going to require some resources of our staff. Where are we as a town willing to say we want ours? We're willing to give those resources for this? We're going to put our actions behind our words? And so how do it? So so my question then is how do we move forward? If we don't have teeth, what are your suggestions for what what are our next steps?
The thing is very obvious to the people out there and people up here. There are three board members that want to move very slow on this. And there are two that want to move forward and do something right away. Is that how you read that?
There's a lot of reading, but that's not for me to say right now.
Let me take you off the hook. You make some great points and I would agree with a lot of the things that you said. I I think we as a board, come up with an outline or a framework, not a total order, not an A to Z. But do we want there to be a penalty fee? Do we want there to be an appointed human rights commission? If we do, we're going to be the qualifications for that. It's going to be purely a voluntary commission, I'm assuming. They don't have, and I'm I'm just telling you, this was scared the daylights out of me. They will have the ability to arbitrate between two people, make a decision and look at one and say, you're wrong. How's that, we're going to punish you? That's what you're saying, coming up with reasons not to do it. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying, look at the responsibility we're going to be giving to people. Pressure they're going to be under. If you were on that commission, if we were to name you a member of that commission because we should probably have a board on the wall, how would you feel arbitrating against one of your fellow business owners? And so I'm I'm not throwing up stops and obstacles. I'm throwing up what I hope would just be fairness. And recognizing that we're in a different world than we've ever been in, where people will react instantaneously to situations and sometimes not have all the facts. So we're supposed to do that. I I would say let's, we can come up with an outline. We want these things and have some discussion on that well before we move to actually draft it. And that would help. And I'll be glad to lend my time to it to kind of help come up with that framework. And say, well, here's sort of banks and you and I can work together. Sure, if you'd like, Emily, if you'd like to join or anybody else. Let's develop the outline, then let's start putting clothes on the mannequin. I was going to say meat on the bone, but that's probably the clothes on the mannequin. We can start to dress it, we can start to add that to it and actually build it out. So I appreciate what Asheville's done, but they've got more exceptions to the ordinance than they do. Look at, here's what the ordinance says. Then it goes into about three pages, appear the things that are exceptions to it. Didn't square that. So I appreciate what they've done, but we're not Nashville. And that's not a bad thing or a good thing. I just want us to be Elon and let's let it be the Elon ordinance versus a copy of Asheville's. So anyway, that's an offer to help. I'll be glad. While I'm writing a resolution with Emily.
Thank all y'all for coming. We appreciate it. We've got some more decisions to do, you're welcome to say. We need to go ahead and go on some other things tonight.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, folks, for being here.
Roger, what what are the next? One is a special. How does how does this work now?
I mean, we have I've written a lot of ordinances in my day. If I steal from somebody else. I'm honest. But, you know, we've we've got five or six different samples and really I I would start with those and look and see what they've done. What are the things that we agree with? What are the things we all agree with? Like you need to Elon? And 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 create that outline or that discussion points.
I'm not sure this board is ready to move on with an order. Saying ordinance. Talking about it.
But that's what we were just talking about.
Trying to develop an outline is what I thought our next step would be. Let's kind of hit, here's the things we, here's the three things we'd like to see in the ordinance. And then just try to, and everybody bring that back to everybody, but then look at that, say, do you agree about this or not?
And I guess my comment was some of that outline or some of those things we'd be looking for. We have resources out there where other towns have looked at, whether they pertain to us or not, we, you know, we don't know. But that would be my approach is to look and see what other folks have done. Are those back together as points of discussion of whether we want to move on on this item or not that item? Exclusion or not that exclusion? Ideas on how you might put together a say an enforcement mechanism, but how do you, how do you, how do you get compliance? You know, there's, there's different ways of doing that. And that would be the that would be the next step as far as I see.
And I wish I was, said when they were here. But I also spoke with a few people from the general assembly. And the general assembly, they're not striking this down currently. And they don't have the ability to strike this down like we saw in H B two. But I also don't think we should do something because we're worried about something being struck down. David said Elon's ordinance. I think when you and I spoke, you made a a great point that I that I really like. I think we all agree upon. When we say non discrimination, it kind of is harsh, right? The the word discrimination can just make feelings happen and just get very electric. The the equality was, right? It goes back to what we all spoke about where everybody to be treated equal. So I I I want to, I personally, with, I don't know how this works with going on to a vote. But, you know, we're not voting. I I would like to continue to move forward to outline to get to an ordinance. So ultimately, as a board, we are talking about an ordinance and how to get to it. Is that, am I understanding incorrectly with trying to get an outline to?
Yeah, I think that's what I'm worried with Davis on that. I think, you know, getting to getting your talking points. Like I said, this is, this is, we're in new territory from a standpoint of just the legalities of it. So I think we do need to have our our ducks in a row there. And that's where it may be different than a noise ordinance or some other ordinances. You know, from that standpoint, because I do think the other thing, as Davis pointed out, is it got to be ready to deal with these circumstances. And the other thing I was going to mention while folks were here was, how do we delineate between a problem at the university versus a problem in the town of Elon? As if it's a student that stepped over across the street is what happens on the campus. So I think that complicates the situation as well. Not to say it can't be done, but I think, you know, if you're going to jump into something like this, to me, you got to have your ducks ducks in a row ahead of time. And I think that's Davis's point is clearly there's some groundswell support for this. There's no question about it. So, but I think we have to, as a board, as our responsibility is to do the due diligence because this is something very new. And I think we're all willing to do that.
Well, and I I think we've got to realize what an ordinance is and what it isn't. I mean, I heard a lot of comments made public about people feeling not safe walking down sidewalks because if someone says something. None of these orders that I've read addresses that. I'm talking about accommodations, employment. So as much as we like to stop that, that's a freedom of speech that those people have the right to do. So I don't want people to think that this is going, this is going to eliminate that. I'm going to take care of that. We we have to make it clear what the ordinance would do, what it wouldn't do. Otherwise, people are going to be disappointed either way. Whatever we come up with is not going to be full a hundred percent agreement. It's not going to go far enough or it went too far. So we have to be very careful the direction we go. And I think our our legal counsel is going to have to help us with that as well. So we'll do that in two weeks.
Before looking at, you know, other ordinances, it's it's pretty cut and dry with any business that offers a public service, right? So if a student crosses the street and a business discriminates against them, right? That's on the on the town. And then in Asheville's, it also, it does have a lot of, not objections, but exemptions. And if you're a private club, right? If you're a private business where you have to become a member, it doesn't pertain to them, the university, it doesn't pertain. And then you were asking about the board of trustees. And I've spoken with a lot of people from the the university. But the statement from the university, their non discrimination is the university does not discriminate based on everything that we have seen from other ordinances in front of us, gender and gender identity. And those are the two big ones. And that's why I feel like it's extremely important for us to do this because there is zero protections statewide federally for this. We can do what we have. We can do what we have legally pout, like the, we can do it. And we've seen, and granted, it's new in North Carolina, I think there's 300 across the state that have done it on a local level. We're not seeing the case of rampant complaints about this. And to your point that I just want to address, Mr. Montgomery. If I, if I'm on the commission and I have to go to a fellow business owner and say, you're wrong. I don't have an issue doing that because the discrimination with equality and humanity, I, I don't budge too much with it. It would hurt me, it would hurt to know that that happened in our town, right? And I think that hurts that everybody feels the same way here is because we don't want it. But I think it's our due diligence to, you move forward with it. And I think we've all agreed to move forward, but baby stepping. And is this something that a committee could help with? So they can dig through this teeth and then they can, like our planning board, and then bring back recommendations to us board members. Instead of us sitting through emails back and forth and trying to figure it out and our time elsewhere, right? Where we do try to go ahead and get an application out for it. So they can start helping putting some meat on the bone or clothes, clothes, the mannequin. To, to, to then present to us and then we can cipher through that and keep moving in that direction.
And some good points, and we're all making some good points. And I'll, I'll try not to, I'm using too many metaphors, I'll try not to beat this horse anymore. But I want us all to just understand that not every complaint is going to be cut and dry. There's going to be nuances. And unfortunately, it comes down to my interpretation based on my filters and my background. And I'll tell you everything, I'll personalize it. I'm biased, completely biased. There's things about, there's things about life, there's things that I do, there's decisions I make based on the way I was brought up and the family I lived in and where, all those sorts of things. We're all biased, biased in a good way, biased in a bad way. And I think we have a lot of trouble. We'll never find a committee of people who can be completely unbiased in every situation. It's just not going to happen. So it scares me or it doesn't scare me. It, it worries me that we would be having a group of people listen and arbitrate his word against his word, her word against hers. And if it gets really shady, make a decision where somebody. So that's, that, those are the ones, the cut and dry ones are the easy ones.
Right.
Yeah, somebody wiped up and whacked the heck out of somebody.
Maybe the commission doesn't do that, right? So we're still trying to, this is part of the outline of how do we do it? Maybe the commission is to put an outline together. Maybe the commission isn't the ones that are going to have to decipher and decide if they're, if it happened or not.
And I absolutely agree that those are good, there's good and plus is minus everything. I don't want to, I don't want to have a group of people working on something that ultimately we may not. I don't want, I'd like to give them something, I'd like to give them the mannequin and say, okay, put the clothes on it to work with. One month they're developing a lot of different things and we come back and say, wow, you know, you spent X number of hours with that. So it's a, it can work either way, Quinn. I mean, whichever way we feel the best way to go about it, but my preference would be that we come up with the outline, then we start to dress it. Or we could do it the other way, have somebody study it, use a bunch of, and then us filter through it, try to decide, does that meet what we're looking for?
You know, one thing concerns me is those forwarders are measurable. We have speed limits, we have, you cut your grass if it gets too high. Or if you build on a property, it has to be certain specifications. Those are easy and measurable. When someone comes in and accuses Quinn for discriminating, you've got to defend yourself. Whether you, whether you were wrong or not, you have to defend yourself. And unfortunately, you've been accused, many people are going to draw the conclusion, well, yeah, Quinn's a bad person. And that's not fair to you. So we have to be very careful about the whole process. Somebody wants to accuse somebody out of spite or maybe misinterpretation. You know, can a committee who's a bunch of volunteers make that decision?
Is this something where if, what do we have, Kathleen, 35 businesses in the town?
Twenty-eight downtown and you probably have another 15 that turn.
So, you know, 42 businesses, if all 42 businesses was like, I'm okay with this. You know, because that's the ones who are affected by it. I'm okay with it. So I say, I mean, I, would I hate that? Absolutely, I don't want that. But I'm willing to do, and what we're seeing from these other ordinances and municipalities that have done this is the first step is mediation, right? And they get both parties together and they talk it out and everybody is okay with it. There hasn't been fines being put out. And I think that's a good way to, to work, right? Because a lot of times it is miscommunication. And that's a good way to, to move with that. We don't, not a lot of resources used with it. So that's a good idea for it, but it's affecting the businesses, right? This ordinance is, is about businesses. And businesses, most of them that I've spoken to practice this already. So doing it would, and willing knowingly supporting, hey, somebody might say, you're discriminating against us. I'm willing to take that risk because it's the betterment for our town. I'm just, right now, I'm, and I can keep running in circles, obviously I support this, right? And I, I keep saying this. I just, I'm confused of, of how we're going to move to get the mannequin and, and where, where to go next with this. For me, I'm thinking we've got a bunch of model ordinances in our packet. We have some other municipalities ordinances. And is that, you know, we look at that and say, we like this, this and this? And then we all email each other and say, we want this and here's our mannequin.
I'm not sure most members of this board are ready to put an ordinance together. I think they are ready to put a committee together to talk about some things. Am I right on this, Davis?
Trying to stand with one leg on both sides of the fence. I, I think what we're feeling most comfortable with is a little bit of study. Let me kind of help and see if this does help. And y'all, this is my statement, not yours, so y'all contradict me if this is the case. I think we're all in favor of an ordinance, an equality ordinance. I think we're in favor of that because of what it does for the town, what it says about the town and the protections it provides. I think we're all in favor of an ordinance. It's just what's in that ordinance, I think, gives some of us some concern and we want to be very careful about it. So the idea of the mayor, if you want to have a committee, I offered that, you know, Quinn and I could come up with an outline. That we both thought was a good one and that'd be a starting point for us. And then we can give it to a committee if the board agrees with that. Or if you want to have a committee, go ahead and take a look at these model ordinances and, and bring back something, a recommendation for us to kind of.
I'd rather have it in the hands of the board instead of committee right now.
Okay.
And if you think you and Quinn can work together and come up with something.
Quinn's better looking and smarter than I am, so he's going to do most of it. And I'm just going to sit there and do this part. But, and I, I won't say this too many times because we've all thought of, we all know it. But as I'm listening to the people speak tonight, I heard the convoy mentioned two or three times. And what an ordinance means is that you will hire a member of that convoy. If not, you're subject to somebody saying, you're discriminating. And so it, it is, in a, in a way, it is saying that because equal is equal. And that's, that's tough to live with. So I just want to, again, I'm being, I'm, I'm not, I've never gambled, I've never lost a dollar on poker because I will not lose a dollar. I'm just not a gambler, so.
So, so is this with, with other committees that we have in our, our town, right? And we put an application out, they got to be, they don't have to be town residents, right? Not, not all of them, but the planning board has, has to be or within our ETJ. So, so I would feel like our, this committee would need to be the same. I know our downtown committee doesn't have all Elon residents. I know the Hark committee doesn't have all of it. But I think a committee of this should be made up of community members, right? Does, and then what is community? Is it people, Mr. Smith here who lives in Burlington, but his community is Elon, his business is in Elon? Is it some of the professors or anybody from the university? And if we get applicants, and we, hopefully we get a, a, a lot of applicants and we get to vet and appoint and that nature. What if somebody from the convoy doesn't apply? You know, does it just shut down the whole, whole gamut of having a, a committee for this? And I don't know, like I, I'm, I'm just asking, does that just, have we hit a dead end then? And, you know, because I don't want this to get swept under the rug. And then I'm sure y'all can all rest assured that, that I will always speak about this. And that's, that's no secret. But I do, I respect all of y'all on the board and I'm willing to, however, we got to move forward. As long as that step is going in front of the other and we're not standing still, I'm okay with this. And it is nice to hear, Davis, and again, you didn't speak for everybody, but, you know, I think everybody's in favor of. Doing some type of equality ordinance, but figuring out the best route of making it so.
Well, I'll go along. I said, Davis and Emily, mainly because I think you're too committed to your thing and I, I don't think you're flexible.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm committed to equality, absolutely.
Do you think I'm flexible?
You're committed, you're committed to an ordinance.
Absolutely.
That's right. I want a couple of people that might not be that committed to an ordinance, but want to do the right thing. That's why I recommended Emily, because I just think you're too devoted to this thing. I, I, I just don't think you can be rational.
Well, I think during the, sorry, Mr. Manager or Mayor for making me feel like I'm irrational about thinking of non-discrimination.
Well, all the people on this board, who is the most outspoken about this?
Absolutely. And I have a constituent and I got a.
I rest my case.
So I have, I have a group of, it's clear that I run in a different circle, right? I was voted into this circle to represent these people. So yes, I will, I will continue to be the most devoted about it.
Remember that you're citizens of the town.
Yeah, that's correct. I, I represent the citizens of the town. And I don't think saying that, trying to do the right thing is, because I will completely disagree with, if we're not moving toward an ordinance, that is not the right thing. I think everything is going to be moved towards an ordinance. So even if it's Emily and Davis putting this together, it's still to be moving toward the ordinance.
I heard it.
Even if it's just Emily and Davis.
It's because it's Emily and Davis, just like we're not just Elon. It's because we're. I have.
Have you heard it? Have you heard it? And we've lived here forever, I've never heard.
I have heard that.
They're scared to say it to our face.
I've heard it from, you know, people who talk about business and economic development. Well, that wouldn't work because it's just Elon and I hear about it, you know, in many different ways. I've heard it from political figures in other elements county towns, but it's just Elon, so. Well, that doesn't mean that I didn't hear it.
Well, anyway, why don't we go with this? Davis and Emily, Mr. Rodner, of Joe Kayla, make sure anything we are doing is legal. And y'all get together and branch out from there. You know, let's move on.
We've only got six months left.
That's right. Quinn would be patient. Let's see. Looking for the manager's budget presentation.
Did you have something to announce?
He just announced, I said, I've only got. Half the people are going to be gone. I think he was talking mentally. May already be the case.
Let's see, manager's budget presentation.
Get rid of that top menu, I can. Trying to get to start slideshow, but it's underneath the other menu. This way.
Ask you real quick, who's our longest serving employee? Do you know that off the top of your head? Tommy had 35 years, so we have an amount worth more than 35.
As far as I know, we have another one who has 35 years in October. Buddy out at the, on the Grand Department. Got some, we've got some longevity.
Well, I asked him if he had another 30 in him.
He said, not here probably, right?
He said, if you'll keep me, and I said, you're just staying for the new vehicles because I saw his new fancy truck.
Yeah, yeah, made a drive by the house and slow down, roll down the window.
It's a slick looking truck.
All right.
Three minutes.
I was told to ask if anybody needs a break. I am all screwed up on this. No, that's, that's what I've been trying to do. Now I'm trying to go back to the beginning. Can't get to the menu icon. I know you don't, neither do I. Okay, FY22 budget. So last year, and I'll, I'll, I'll be brief just because it's stretched a lot of time. We are a, a much different location than we were four months ago. Rather than walking into a pandemic, we're hopefully coming out of it. We were planning for reduced revenues, specifically sales tax revenues. We had estimates of upwards of 50% reduction in sales tax revenues. And we're, we're looking at a year where we're going to exceed two years ago revenues. Last year exceeded the, the previous year, so it has caught us all off guard in a good way. We were looking at potential property tax reduction as far as collections, collections up where they stay current. So we ended up being in a, a pretty good position as the fiscal year has progressed. We will, the additional revenues, primarily sales tax, allowed us to think some of the capital items that we deferred last year, bring them back into this current year budget. Which obviously helps further out. We looked at, we had some budget cuts, we were able to restore as the revenues continue to come in. So FY21, which was, was a, a very dark beginning. Turned out to be a fairly good year in terms of revenues and budgeting. For the, for the general fund, we, we went through a budgetary process as the revenues came in. We increased our budget by about $500,000. And we increased our utility budgets by about $100,000 as unanticipated revenues came in. That puts us pretty much in line with the budget we had in FY20, which was about $12.5 million. So we're just shy of that. We obviously have not gotten to the end of the fiscal year, but we look in pretty good shape that we'll be adding to our fund balance at, at the end of the fiscal year.
Just wrote, I, I appreciate you including that in there. I, I know it's kind of a steady step forward, but I'd love for us to always be in the position, no matter what, if a year we're contributing. It's just to keep it, just to keep it going.
No guarantees at this point, because who knows what's going to happen in the next six weeks, but we look pretty good.
Yeah, that, that's our safeguard for the future. That's our, that's, that's the hedge against the bet that if we have to have it, it's there to help us out. And quite frankly, some of the things that we're able to do, have done, are going to do simply because of that general fund. Thank you for making that a point.
So some of the things that we're looking forward to in '22. We've talked in the past about the purchase of the Travis Creek pump station. Significant expense on our part. Looks like we require debt service, which will be ongoing as we move forward. Increases in insurances. Increases in insurances. Got that on the agenda later this evening, but, uh, health insurance is up. Two years in a row now, we've, we've negotiated with our vendor and moved proposed increases from well, fourteen point eight percent this year. I think it was over fifteen percent last year. This year that we talked him down about six point eight. So we're, we're, it goes up every year. We don't have a lot of control over that. You can try and minimize it and, uh, so we're, we're, we're doing better than some in that area. One of the advantages we have is that we've noticed with our staff is, is longevity and experience when that comes higher payroll costs. And, and, and merit increases. Those, those are annual issues that, that that's our responsibility to do that with our first half, I think. Reduction in interest earned. We were, uh, well over one percent last year and this year we're about a tenth of a percent interest rate. One, one hundredth of a percent. The, the bottom has just fallen out on, on savings. Uh, we've, we've moved some of our money around into different, different low, extremely low risk investments. Just to, to, you know, get up to point one percent. Um, so, uh, but we're not gonna see the sixty thousand dollars we saw two years ago. We'll be lucky, we hit five thousand. Talked about Travis Creek. Uh, we will be looking at a, a proposed increase in our utility rates this year. We have some ways that we might be able to mitigate some future ones, uh, to help afford that debt service. Sales tax revenues are up. Modest growth in, in, in value of the community, I think was about one percent this year, uh, which adds to, to tax revenues, obviously. We're looking at relaxing COVID protocols. And the, the button will run through, has, has no proposed tax increase, although it does have a rating. And one of these that, that is a something new that we haven't had to deal with in the past, uh, and it's something that we're still trying to figure out how we're gonna deal with, with federal stimulus money. The, the guidance was just released yesterday from the federal government. I was reading through it a little bit this afternoon and I still don't know what it says, to be honest with you. Uh, it's all terminology that, that, uh, we don't use. Um, that's something that they use.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rodner. What's the deadline for having that?
Right now it's December thirty-first, twenty-four. So we have, we have time, uh, to plan for it and, and use it wisely. Um, and, and, you know, quite frankly, make the most of it for our community. So that, you know, it's, you know, we're not gonna pay payroll with it. We're not gonna pay for lights and it, these are some transformational issues that we have that we'll be able to address with that month. Revenues, uh, and I, I typically start with revenues, cause that's where, that's, that's the heart of the budget. The expenditures come later. Property taxes up about forty-five thousand. Sales tax, we're budgeting for an increase of about six hundred thousand over the current fiscal year. Budget two point seven this year. We're budgeting, uh, three point three. State es- estimate is that we will do better than that. But we're, we're, again, we're trying to be a little conservative on that. Increase or decrease in interest earned. The use of our fund balance, uh, we're gonna, we're proposing to increase what we take out of our fund balance, why about forty-three thousand dollars? Was, uh, three twenty-something last year. We're proposing three sixty-something this year. And, uh, total spending, total spending in the general fund is an increase of about six hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Power bill is down a little bit. Uh, water and sewer budget is up two point eight million dollars. Uh, and, and before we, we go agog on that, two million of that is, is purchasing the pump station. Or too many of that is, is revenue that we'll take in through bonds or borrowing in order to pay for the pump station. So it's, it, that's an odd figure. The, most of the rest of that is, um, differences in the, the transactions between Burlington, Gibsonville and Elon for sewer and water. So a lot of it is increased revenues that we're getting from, uh, Gibsonville. A lot of it is on the expenditure side is additional payments to Burlington. So total revenue increases are estimated at about three and a half million dollars over a current year. Again, two of that is, is the pump station.
Quick question, Mr. Rudner?
Yes.
So I saw where Burlington, uh, I don't know if the pastor is proposed from their manager, but, uh, a rate increase for their water and sewers, one percent. Are we gonna, we'll adjust?
We, we already factored that in. So when I say we're looking at an increase in our rate, that includes Burlington's increase as well. So increases in expenditures, as I mentioned, our health insurance is up about six point eight percent. Payroll, I'm recommending a, a one and a half percent cost of living increase. That's based on one point four, uh, percent inflation over the last twelve months, as of a couple of months ago. As, as we've seen, that, that's changed a little bit in the last. Fund merit, which allows for increases of up to three percent. We typically budget a percent and a half and that, that balances out. Retirement, uh, it's ongoing effort to keep the NC retirement plan solvent. Increased the town's contribution to our employees' retirement by one point two percent again this year. Uh, financial software, we increased that line by about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That would give us the resources to purchase, uh, a, a new, new software package to replace what we've been using for fifteen plus years.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six. So that would replace and upgrade our financial software, give us more capacity to, to do analysis and, and feel a little bit more robust than what we've got today. Contingency line that we had in our budget this last year, proposing reduce that. Downtown capital improvements, an increase of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars that goes toward additional parking along West Lebanon. We are looking at hiring a, a person in the planning offices, the support to our planner. We're anticipating that'll take a couple of months to happen. So we've only budgeted for nine months. Police salaries. We've increased those through obviously merit and everything else, but we also included a line for an incentive program that, that we're working on to, to compensate our existing officers, uh, perhaps to reward officers who go out and, you know, find other officers to come join us. That, that's what we're trying to figure out. What makes sense? What keeps our, our wages and salaries competitive with other communities in our, for, for police? Uh, fire department, uh, we've added an overtime line. Increase the fire department's capital budget from last year to this year for some workout of our fire tower, uh, site. Public works, we've added a new line to, as you'll see next month, uh, when we break, you, you recall, we commissioned a, uh, Americans with Disability Act analysis of the community. You'll be seeing that report this next month. We're, we're proposing to start adding money into our budget on an annual basis to start addressing some of the issues that are being highlighted. Uh, sewer and water capitals, an increase of, uh, again, that two million dollars for the pump station. Sewer charge from Burlington will be about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollar increase. Gibsonville sewer will decrease by two hundred and twenty-five thousand. And then if we go back to the revenues, you'll see that's made up for the rest of the Burlington increase. Some of the things that we haven't done, uh, or that we're proposing, one is, um, currently, uh, employees receive, uh, one, one and a half times their, uh, salary in, uh, life insurance. But there's a cap of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which equates to eighty something thousand dollars for salary. What we're recommending is, and, and we have three or four employees who are over that right now. Next year, year after, we'll probably add, you know, one or two more perhaps. So what we're recommending is, uh, that we increase that cap from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty. About a four hundred dollar line item in our, in the budget for the premium. We have not budgeted anything currently for town hall office space. Uh, we're starting some discussions with some folks in town, property owners about some options that may be out there. Phyllis in our rec department is applying for a grant, uh, for a bicycle, tricycle track at Lawrence Slade Park. That grant won't be awarded until September. If we, if we're successful, we'd have to come up with a match of about sixteen thousand dollars. Not budgeted for that at this point. And, uh, I, I told Phyllis that I'd remind everybody that we did not budget for the electronic sign that she would like to have out at the corner of Westbrook and University. So getting back to fund balance, um, our, our state, our policy is that our fund balance should be minimum of forty percent of our budget. So currently for our proposed FY twenty-two budget, that'd be about three point one million dollars. Currently, our general fund balance is about seven point eight. So we're seventy percent of our budget. Uh, we, we need to be at forty percent. And, uh, back in June of twenty twenty, fund balance is a five point seven. So we've, we've grown our fund balance quite a bit over the last two years. And as you said, David said, you know, that's our insurance policy or that's our ability to do things. And we may, maybe in a position that, you know, if we have things that we need to do, that might be an avenue that, that we have a resource that we can draw and still exceed our, our policy limits. So that's the quick and dirty of the of, of my budget presentation. There was a copy of it in your, uh, in your packet, uh, the actual line item budget as well as these slides and, um, so leaving it at that and see if anybody has any questions and if not, we'll move toward a public hearing on June seventh. So we will have two meetings in June, um, June seventh, the, the public hearing on the budget and, uh, the adoption, um, on the fifteenth.
Will we be able to join via Zoom for that?
My plan, yes.
Cause I will be on vacation.
I heard.
Who told on me, Quinn? Geez.
Do you have any help with this budget?
No, I did it all myself, mayor. Um, I, as, as I said, the, when I was giving out the awards earlier, that, uh, I, I, I rely heavily on somebody who knows where all the money is and, um, how to take care of it. So, no, uh, Misty and I worked very, very closely on the budget. And as, as, as do the department heads, uh, you know, they, they give me their, their reasonable budgets and then I, I I'm able to shrink those down somewhat usually. But as I said, we, we're in a fortunate position with sales tax revenues, based on the conservative approach we took, that we, we have, we have significant revenues coming in this next year that we didn't plan on current year. So that, that's made budgeting this year relatively easy.
And there's no tax increase.
There's no tax increase.
And from those list of items that the board needs to decide or discuss or whatever it said, is there? When do you need, like, when do we need to make that decision?
I, I'd say before June fifteenth, if we want to put it in the budget. You know, we can always wait and see and you, you know, like with the, the grant match, you know, if that comes, if the grant comes in, we could do a budget amendment next September, as an example. The increase in, in life insurance, you know, if that's something that you're, you're fine with, then we just go ahead and do that.
And that's how much?
It was like four hundred dollars. It's, it's just a policy change, which is why I highlighted it. I didn't highlight it for the money change.
In terms of town hall office space, I mean, obviously that's probably, uh, somewhat of a longer term process, but would we look at? Or sorry, what would your recommendation be as to, do you, do we budget for something or do we wait and see what happens and then do a budget amendment?
I wouldn't know what to budget for at this point. Folks, I've talked to, in essence, what I've told them is that you're in need of additional space, probably leave this room. We don't need to build another meeting room. But probably vacate the offices here. My new office space. But the police department utilize the rest of this building. I'm willing to talk to people about borrowing land. Design build, having to build us a new town hall. Unless there's, unless there's objections, I, I'd be willing to talk about a leasing situation. Somebody else's property, lease the space for town hall. Uh, maybe there's a wide range of options that would be out there that we could utilize. That may keep our capital costs low, but give us a long-term operating expense. Or maybe we have a upfront capital, pay off a debt. It's fund balance. And, and move forward that way. And different people have different views of how they want to use their land. Some are more than will, willing to lease it to us, but don't want to sell it. So I don't have a budget number right now for town hall. Uh, I think we're more in the investigative stage right now and, uh, most if there's expenses for an appraisal. That could probably come out of existing operating costs or something like that.
Maybe a, a little premature, but I, I think what you're thinking about, and maybe I've just put words in your mouth. I apologize. It almost seems inevitable. Something. The idea of that we set up, can we set up a fund and start just deposits in it to set aside? Office space, would that be?
We could. Uh, I, I'd make the argument that we already have and that's our fund balance. You know, I, six one hundred and dozens in the other to some extent. We're a million dollars over where we need to be, where we decided, you know, we need to be at least this high. We've still got a couple million dollars in there that we could use as a down payment or upfront cost bond sum. You know, we would have options. And if, if we needed to hire an architect to come in and actually lay out space for us, what we need, that might be a budget amendment that we draw on fund balance to do something like that. Cause that'd be more than an appraisal, a couple thousand dollars or something.
There's really no advantage to, really no advantage to earmark and funds for the municipal building. We just use the general fund balances that.
Because our fund balance is where it is, I would say yes, that, that's correct.
So we, we need to authorize, um, town manager to be exploring options for acquisition of property. Cause obviously it's kind of thing where you gotta go out tomorrow and buy a property. We're gonna have to have long talks and the good occasions. See, so is that something that you can for us to give you? Approve to start that process? Otherwise, we're gonna be this same situation next year. Just talked about it. You know, closer to come up with a sites.
I, I you know, I, I suppose if you wanted to do that, that'd be fine. I'm obviously not at a point where I'm signing anything. Yeah, I, I, I have to come to you to say, hey, you know, I've, I've been with somebody. Want to enter into purchase sales or I wanna put my foot in the door, put the town's foot in the door. I come seek authorization at that point. At least I have, I'd have some information, what to pass on and what, what that actually would look like. But if you want to do something sooner than that, more of a blanket thing, not, not only that, there's no objection to that. Still come back.
Things change so quickly at times where property comes available.
Yeah.
You would know about it as we've experienced the past. So we were the back of the line as far as being in consideration. My concern is if you start having those discussions now with property owners or. My concern is if you start having those discussions now with property owners or or businesses. An opportunity presents itself, then there's sort of a queue. May not be something we could afford. Same took is if we don't start like Quinn said, once we're moving forward, we just then.
That no, that'd be fine.
We need to do that.
Can you just do it on our recommendation or do you need a motion? I thought you and I had a conversation sometime ago that we're gonna start looking for.
And I am, and I and I've, we've I've been talking, so I I'm comfortable at this point. I don't know that, I mean, anybody I'm talking to. I'm not concerned about property changing hands. That quickly. So, but you know, if you want to authorize me to to, you know. Enter a purchase sales agreement, typically you'd want to know what property it is, I would think, or what the price is. Right? I'm just, I'm not sure what the authorization would look like yet, I guess.
Sounds to me that you've already, you're already kind of in that mode now. Which I'm gonna agree with, that you're, you know, looking out for us. Because you'd be coming to the board no matter what. If X Y Z property comes available, you would say, hey, we need a special meeting, maybe get together and.
Or even property may not be available till we ask. Hey, what would you think about this kind of a deal for this property? Well, let's talk about it. Then I'd come back and say, hit, you know, authorization to negotiate.
Have we approached the university about what any property they might have that? They might be willing to.
They are on my shortlist. I I will not, I will say I've not touched base with them specifically on that yet. Because the the. Folks that I deal with, there's been transition in that office, so. What's the next item? Mentioned. I'd share it. So as I indicated, we we work with a company called Hub. They 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 do all the legwork for us on our insurances. They brought us back proposals from different, different vendors. Of various insurances. That were. Some cases a bit higher than than we wanted to pay. And so we we've gone back and forth a couple of times and have come up with. Insurance packet that includes a six point eight percent increase in health insurance. The. Mutual of Omaha, which does our life and dental. The dental increase was about a five percent increase. Poor premiums are over a thousand dollars and. Life was up twenty-seven percent. Which is about twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars and then the change in. That includes the additional cap on life insurance. Part of the health and health insurance program, we get a two thousand dollar reimbursement from Cigna to help fund our our wellness program. And vision coverage remains the same. So you've got the rest of that information and the the sheet from Cigna on the on their on their plans.
I do just have a question about the health insurance process. Because we're technically a smaller employer. Is there not? In the state of North Carolina, like some sort of municipal marketplace that we could get lower rates by pairing up? With other municipalities?
North Carolina municipalities does have a cooperative program like that. And which is what I was used to coming here and last year for renewal, I I wanted to hear from them. They and they, I don't remember what the percentage was, but they were significantly more expensive than private insurance. And they and that that was, that wasn't a complete quote from them at the time. Because some information they needed that we didn't have access to right away, but they were much higher than what we were paying on the open market. I was surprised as well.
Yeah, there is another one out there, but you have to have at least seventy-five employees. I've talked to them a couple of times. We just aren't quite there yet.
How many employees do we have?
Sixty-one full time.
So not everybody's enrolled, I guess, based on your.
They took that as a snapshot and it was when we were down a couple of them.
Do we have a hundred percent enrollment? I'm assuming that we do because our deductibles are very low and. Well, yeah, but I mean, in terms of you as the employees, I mean, it's a very generous.
Two thousand dollar reimbursement for the wellness program, is that per employee that takes it down?
No, it's for the program.
Just by having a wellness program, I see. Just by having a wellness program is a two thousand dollar reimburse.
Yeah, so like, we we have a lunch and learn coming up. The cost of that would be reimbursed for, or if we'll do incentives, we'll get reimbursed for those incentives.
Do we give a discount for non-smokers? On health insurance? Is there any incentive for the people who don't smoke?
Or disincentive?
Other than standing in the rain to smoke, no. So if there's no other questions, what we'd look, what we're looking for is a approval from the board. So that we can go ahead and get those contracts signed and there are folks enrolled. Next couple of weeks.
We'll have a motion from the board to approve. You have a second? Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Board. While Diane's allowing our consultant to share her screen, a very brief introduction. Michelle Super, Super Crewby with SEPI Incorporated was our consultant on this project. She has a brief presentation that she'd like to share with you about where we are. We're asking for adoption of this phase one study this evening. And you have all received printed copies and of course, this is, this has been put out for public review. For several weeks on our website and we had a steering committee made up of citizens that walked us. Walked us through this this process. And while that's happening. Just to let you know that phases two and three are about to begin. We wanted to wrap this one up because of the outside funding that we received for phase one. And phases two and three, which will complete the full corridor, will run concurrently. And we hope to get started on that in the next one to two months.
He is now panelist, if she'll go ahead and unmute herself and show her video.
Let's see if Michelle can.
Yes, I am here. If you can see me and hear me.
We can hear you.
Thank you, Michelle. If you could try to see if you could get a video of me, but maybe not, that might be a good thing. Let me get my presentation going here. Can you see the presentation? Not yet. Okay. Do you see a presentation now?
Sometimes there's a delay.
Do you see me? Now, sorry about that. Okay, I've told it to share, so I guess we're waiting. Technology's fun. No sharing yet. Okay, I'm not certain what's going on with this.
Do we need to change our view maybe? I mean, it shouldn't, because it shows that our view is definitely.
Give me one second. Will?
Michelle, I know the visuals always help. You might be able to walk through some of this verbally.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I can start just discussing it until we get the video on in place. Good evening, everyone. As Pam mentioned, I'm with SEPI Engineering in Raleigh. And the corridor phases that we are looking at is just phase one tonight. And if I could show you a map, I would show you that, but basically it extends from South Antioch to York Road. And phase one was picked for a variety of reasons, including funding. Which came from the MPO and through the state and federal governments as well as. Conditions with the existing environment out there as well as the pedestrian conflict. So those three things kind of made up the reasoning for choosing phase one rather than it being any of the other portions. But as you may know, the rest of the corridor extends from University Drive. To the west and then it extends all the way to Webb Avenue, excuse me, to the east. So that's the inclusion of all three phases for that. So hopefully that didn't confuse you without a map in front of you. So moving on, the reason for the study, there's several reasons for it. As you recall, the Elon envisioned plan looked at this area as a high priority for needing a a corridor plan. A lot of accidents, a lot of need for gateway features entering Elon from both the west and the east. But as we looked at the project, we ran into some other existing conditions which are worthy of mentioning. One of the things that is good for this road right now is that you have a low traffic volumes for cars. So that's actually good for you because your two lane road actually is being supported. The capacity isn't being exceeded for a two lane road. Now we're in the future. We did look at the MPO's future traffic volumes and you're way within the usual eighteen to twenty-two thousand cars per day. That roadway ranges between three and seven or eight. So you're way within the the framework for capacity to shrink that from a three lane to two lane where you might need to. So two lane is good through the whole quarter, actually, but both other phases as well. So that was sort of the end of the good news part of it. The other parts, not so good. You have a lot of speeding traffic. You have a lot of pedestrians and bicycles. You don't have any dedicated bike lanes. You have a lot of high number of pedestrian bike and car crashes. You're missing a sidewalk segment or two, especially on the south side of the roadway, east of Lawrence Street. And then the sidewalks that are out there are narrow, even though they're five foot wide, which is the minimum standard for a sidewalk. Normally, you like to see six to eight foot. And what the real problem is, is they're located directly along the back of the curb. Which, as you're walking along the roadway, doesn't give you much of a safety feel when the road, when the traffic's passing. Within a foot and a half of you on the other side of the curb. So we saw a lot of people actually not using the sidewalk when one was there. If it was right up on the curb, they were walking off into the vegetation. To get naturally further away from the moving traffic. Other things with the sidewalk right now is you've got utility poles and fire hydrants blocking it. It's not ADA compliant because of those things. And then in a couple areas, at least one where it crosses a creek, you've got a guardrail situation that's that's insufficient. And and actually, one of the things we heard on our survey with the with the residents there was that the. That area is used as a as a hazing ritual for the college to see if drunk kids can make it along that sidewalk. Because of of the guardrail or the handheld rail, they're not being very sufficient. So, um, I know, sort of a little tied by in information there for you. Are you guys seeing anything yet now?
Just you.
Just me, great. So you can watch me read, okay. Pam, do you happen to have my presentation there that you can project? I feel like it's kind of wasted, especially the design part of this is going to be kind of hard. But that's fine. So. Technology. Yeah, I don't see anything. I've I've unmuted. I don't see any other way to share than what I've done, so.
A little green box up top that says share screen. You don't see that?
I see other people attendees, but I don't see a way to do anything beyond this.
Well, Wayne, could you give us just a an idea about how many people actually participated and responded questionnaires and so forth?
We got about eighty-five, I believe, responses. At the time that we did it, and I'll have a slide or two. Are you seeing anything now? Okay, I just tried something else here, so apologize. So let me get, let me get to full screen now that you're seeing it. So let me go back to just. A couple of slides here, just so that you can see the mapping. So here you can see the map that I was talking about a minute ago. So between Antioch and York is the phase one area and you can see the other phases on either side. And then moving down, I just had this other map in here so you can see the jurisdiction lines. So you can see where Burlington comes up just a little bit in phase one and just a tiny bit in phase three. Every every other part of the corridor is is controlled by the town, except for a little county area to the the end of phase three there. So this was my existing condition slide and you can see that handrail there. I've already talked about this, but that was the the hazing spot apparently. If you've not seen this driving through Haggard, it was it was interesting walking and seeing people how to navigate the corridor. So mainly why we're doing the study is all the things that were listed in your previous plans. But they're encapsulated here with the context of what we found in the field. So we've got a lot of conflict points for multimodal needs in the corridor and a lot of potential for crashes. We need to reduce those and we need to improve that. We also need to have better connectivity and access, of course. But really, the motor vehicle level of service is not as much of an issue that we're aware of right now. But because of our funding restraints, we weren't able to do a full traffic study. But like I said, we did look at the existing traffic volumes on the roadway that are out there and what had been projected by the MPO. And we're not, we're not envisioning a lot of problems, but the the good news is we're at such a high level of of concepts here. That we'll have plenty of time in future iterations, as you know, project keep moving forward with future design to look at level of service. And for example, like turn turn situations, do you need to expand your your queue line? Or change your signal timing? All those things will be looked at later when the project moves forward. But safety obviously is a big deal. I mean, then of course, creating gateway theme is what we were also looking at. Our goals really are, we we recognize right from the beginning that we're going to be able to have that additional lane in those three lane sections. Because of, again, the volume not being needed. And one of the things we've noticed as transportation people is the more asphalt width. You give to somebody as they're driving a car, the more likely they're going to use all that. So the more width you give, the more they wander through that. And it actually becomes a more dangerous situation than less width. So some of those three-lane sections where the cars can go pretty much anywhere they want, I would not necessarily want to be a bicyclist on that. You might intuitively think you have more pavement, but cars tend to wander a little bit more when they when they have more pavement. So reducing it as the road diet is actually a safety improvement. And then, of course, calming traffic and getting some complete street elements in there and improving safety. So that's why we're doing it. What we did, we used an advisory committee, heard you talking about committee earlier. We basically looked at everyone that might be of interest in this area from the surrounding resident, or excuse me, the surrounding localities Burlington and Gibsonville to the PTRC Burlington Graham MPO. So the the agencies that would have some transportation focus, as well as some walkability and bike people on there. We didn't have the best participation, I would say, but a lot of that was COVID-related. And I think we're going to change that going forward on the next rounds of who's going to be on the committee because of that. So we learned a little bit on that. And then, of course, on our schedule, we started last June. We started really quick, had a kickoff meeting really quick. And then the stakeholders were also involved with a four-hour design charrette that we split into two parts so that we could meet the protocol for under ten people in person. And we did very successful. So we had half in the morning and half in the afternoon. And we got all of them accomplished through a design charrette, and that was very successful. And then we had two public meetings, and then, of course, the plan has been out for review since February, about February first approximately. So what did we hear from the public? Most of the things we've heard from the stakeholders, we've incorporated in the project. So there was a roundabout at York Street. You'll see that we've incorporated Oak Street being realigned with a roundabout was also something we heard had been looked at by the university. So we've incorporated that. We've also incorporated making overhead utilities, at least recommended to be buried, especially downtown. And then, of course, you want to try to coordinate construction like your new water line. I saw your RFP out on that. You're going to try, if you can, to coordinate that. But this project's just at the very early stages, and it may not work out timing-wise. But of course, you always try to avoid ripping up the road more than once. And then, of course, we had a lot of design concepts brought out of the charrette. So with that, the main, the main thing we heard, like we said, there was about eighty-five, eighty-four-ish comments during our survey. I have a lot more slides in the report if you have looked at, and I can get into more. I was trying to be brief here. But basically, encapsulating what we heard, most of the people that responded, at least seventy-five plus percent of them, use a bike or walk the corridor, at least some of the time. So they're not all auto people, automobile, right, drivers. So that was good to know. And most of them like the existing corridor. It's convenient. It has great aesthetics in certain areas. And then, of course, access to the university, as well as either side in the community and passing through the center of town. But folks were very concerned about the pedestrian vehicle conflicts. As you can see on this one encapsulated slide here, pedestrian safety was high-ranked in the the most concerned department. But you can see right below that was verbal harassment and threat of violence. Okay, and the reason for that was we put this survey out, as I said, in September. We heard pretty quickly from Pamela that there was some political rallies that drove through Haggard Road right during our survey. And apparently, there was a lot of harassing behaviors observed because we got a lot of comments back on the survey for this project about the harassing behaviors. And their solution for it was to close the road. So we're being, you know, here giving this to you, we're divulging everything. But we put it out in the in the report as well that there there was some, you know, interesting ideas for closure. One of the more interesting things I heard out of it was that people really felt like it was a campus road. They felt because of the campus being on either side and so many students needing to walk through at least that part of Haggard, the perception of it being a campus road was high. But we have a lot of reasons for keeping the road open. There's, and other people made comments, not just, this isn't just from us. This is what the public said about wanting to remain open. There are other routes that are available for people if they want to avoid the harassing behavior. But you would have to figure out your traffic movement if you did close that roadway to navigate the train tracks. So if you thought about it for a second, if that was closed to public traffic, what would that look like? There would be a lot of ramifications that have not been studied. But you would also cut off access to university buildings, buildings and businesses and facilities right down in there for public traffic access. The connectivity issue, of course, through downtown would be severed. You'd always obviously have the university to get around, but that direct connection would be gone. And then you would just, if if the harassment is a behavioral issue, you're really going to just move it to another place. If people are wanting to drive through your community for whatever reason, they just picked Haggard because it's there. But if you blocked Haggard, I'm sure they'd pick something else. And then, of course, public access to the church that's across the street there that we had or charrette in the Community to Life Center is an important community asset. So for those reasons, plus the fact that it's a roadway that's controlled by DOT, who owns majority of the road. And then it's not been planned or studied by the town in any of its fashion, nor has it been studied by the university to close it. We're we're not recommending it. We we heard it. We're passing it on to you as FYI. And then, of course, the town is going to continue to talk with university and DOT regarding any of the concerns through traffic and anything else right there. But the the point of the study was just to recognize that we got all of those comments, but they they weren't going to necessarily affect when we were trying to make this improving the roadway for all users, not just close it to cars. So with that, our our goal was to give you schematic designs that you could then carry forward in getting this project into the DOT step, which is very important to get funding. And it's also important for you to have a plan like this that calls out pedestrian and bicycle improvements because under the new DOT Complete Streets policy, the the municipalities that have these plans that talk about these things will actually have a better opportunity to get money from the state than if your plan didn't. So the the state is now going to look at all these plans that localities have. And if they're not talking about bike lanes and sidewalks and particular corridors, the state is going to have a different ratio of funding assistance than if you did. So it's very important that you have bikes and sidewalks and plans going forward to get state money. That's just advice. So here we are getting some designs for you, and we're also going to talk about some ordinance changes. So with that, here's the draft designs. I'm glad I can actually show you. This is a schematic, okay? And and this is the very first thing you're going to see when you do transportation planning because it's really just trying to figure out what you want. It's not getting down to the measurement detail. It's not, you know, giving you lanes on a page yet. Now, later phases of this project will do that. But right now, we're laying out the general concepts and the general ideas. So we've incorporated the roundabout here at Oak Street. We've incorporated the skew being taken away from that skew, meaning right now it's at a weird angle, and that's contributing to some of the accidents there. But making it at a ninety-degree crossing here, which is also planned by the university, will improve safety all by itself. But the university has already looked at a roundabout here, and and we agree that a roundabout should be looked at. And it and it can be designed to handle a lot of pedestrians that we envision predicting going through there. So that's one main thing. The other thing is the intersection at Antioch. We recognize that there's future access to the college to the north here that they want, as well as, you know, we've got to handle pedestrians coming through here. So there'll be some future improvements at that intersection as well. But one of the main things we wanted to do was give you an idea of how to better protect the pedestrians and separate them from the moving traffic. So in transportation terms, you want to create buffers. You want to create barriers. So what we've proposed is a median. And we've also proposed having a streetscape buffer between the roadway and any multi-use path or sidewalk beyond just a one and a half foot curb. So we're recommending an actual vegetated buffer in there. And all of these things would be done in the in the way, hopefully, that would protect the pedestrian and calm traffic, slow it down. And this pathway here, this yellow dash line, is important because this is Elon University telling us where they plan or want to plan their major pedestrian crossing in their ultimate master plan. So we've incorporated that here to recognize that that's what they want it to be. So this would be probably a controlled mid-block crossing with lights and pedestrian signals. And those aren't easy to do, but if you have them in a plan already and DOT knows that you've already talked about it, and there's a way, and there's a reason, they're a little easier to get done. I'm working on a project in another place right now that they're taking off all our mid-block crosswalks that we had proposed during the conceptual phase because we're now dealing with the engineers and the and the other folks that don't necessarily like them, the ones that want to move the traffic. But the plan we're working on on that other project didn't already have this concept laid out, so it's a little harder to argue on that one. So that's why it's important to have this here's. And then DOT's been involved this whole time so that you can work with them, and they know what you're doing. They know what you're trying to do. But having clear crossings for pedestrians, having wider paths for multi-use or sidewalks that are separated on both sides, and having an on-street bicycle lane or making that multi-use path on the side being for both walking and biking, those are the really the keys to improve the safety through that area. And also, the the transition that you would get by doing landscape design the right way, where you would have street trees and plantings that would give you the the sort of subliminal cues as a driver that you're entering a different space, where you're entering a protect, a protected roadway area where you know the road's getting narrower, where you see a median that has landscaping, where you see some signage and some warnings that that something's happening ahead. Those will be much better for the pedestrians than what they've been doing now, which apparently is just running across the road willy-nilly. So the next one, that was the campus area. This is the suburban area, and they're different because the little different design. As you can see, this is a little bit more of a widened area with, excuse me, more of a a narrower area, I should say, with a narrower median. But still a median. And again, any median breaks that are shown on here are just for demonstrative purposes. In the future, studies will be done to see where they're needed. The traffic studies will know where the cars are needing to turn. And one of the things you'll hear is complaints about people that don't want to go down if they're making a right out of Oasis Apartments, for example. And this is the median. They'll have to make a loop to come back. Just be prepared. That's the kind of stuff you get. But a median is important to keep cars away from from pedestrians and bicycles, but also keep cars away from cars. And it just protects it and provides a much more pleasurable environment for both bicycles and pedestrians to work through there. So at York, we also have looked at proposing a roundabout. You can see with this little circle here. And then, of course, Lawrence, we've just identified, recognized that it's going to have to have some improvements. One of the other things we noticed was this line here, this campus master plan. They're proposing an access point for their major property up here to be developed. I'll talk about this again in a minute with our ordinance recommendations. But I just wanted to point out on the map here where they're proposing this. And we've recognized that this this will come into this at this point. But with that, I'm going to go ahead unless anybody has a question on the designs. I'm going to launch into the ordinance changes. Does anybody want to talk about the plans yet or wait till the end? Okay. So ordinance changes. We looked at land use as in the corridor to see if there was a reason we might want in our overlay district to have any land use controls beyond what your base zoning does. And there really is no reason that we found. The university owns the majority of the property out there, and the town is continuing to work with them on their planning. So the underlying zoning and the and the land use plan for the area, both of those things really don't garner a need to get more specific into, you know, should some other use be allowed? I think the town felt very comfortable with what you already have as far as uses there. So with that, we looked at other things. This is the access management. This yellow line here is showing this blue line, which is the new collector road that the university has on their master plan. In transportation planning world, you don't want to have a lot of driveways along any road. And anytime you're looking at future corridor improvements that aren't already built out, an area that has vacant land, you want to look at number of driveway cuts or new roadways. So what we've tried to put into our recommendations here is we just want to limit the driveway cuts along Haggard. It just makes traffic flow better, less accidents. So what that usually requires is if you have a big piece of land like this being built one day, you want to see access from those parcels onto this road first and then have maybe a signal down here under Haggard and not just fifty driveways along Haggard. So that's why we put that in there about wanting to have some sort of management of that corridor with the university. And we did soften up our language a little bit between the draft and the final for for them. So they, I think, are in support of this now. Pam can speak to that more. So other things we looked at for ordinances as we were evaluating the corridors, whether or not we needed to change a front yard setback. As you're trying to put a streetscape through a corridor, you want to make sure you have room for it. We're trying to look at where we don't have to buy right away, where there would be existing roadway. And then the three-lane section, that's easier. But when you look at the two-lane section and your existing setback for urban residential zone is only ten feet from the front property line, that doesn't give you a lot of room, especially if you're trying to put a sidewalk further back than than it is now, plus, you know, it it's on width. So we've recommended that the minimum front yard setback in the just this area of the corridor be increased from ten to twenty feet. And then the maximum would increase from twenty to thirty. And then both of those together would make you almost identical to what's already zoned around it, the UR zone, which is the PI zone, Public Use Zone, Public Institutional Zone. So they would have the same setbacks for both uses in that corridor. No matter what it's on now, you would have similar setbacks in the buildings, which would give you the wider space to do some of these improvements. So if new development happens and this ordinance gets put in place, it would protect that use from accidentally building too close. And then someday, the state has to come and buy them out and move them one day. So it's better to to let them come in at the further setback to avoid moving them in the future to get your improvements. We also evaluated utilities, as we mentioned. It was commented that getting those, especially those power poles and those utility lines out of the sidewalk, getting them somewhere else, if you don't put them underground, you're just going to put them back further. You're going to move them to the side. And if you're going to move them, you might as well move them underground. And if you have it in a plan that says it's going to be undergrounded, you're more likely to get money from the state to do so. So that's why it's important to get this in the plan that you want them undergrounded, and there's a reason for it. And you can show right now you're not compliant with ADA. So it would be a pretty easy. If you were fixing this and not widening the road, you could probably get some money to underground them right now because they're ADA in compliance. But with the new road, I think you'd have a pretty good argument to underground them in the future. So for the design standards, this table I'm going to show you in a second gives all your standards. And I don't know how much you pay attention to this, but in your land development ordinance, you currently have a roadway design standard. And we just want to make sure that that's amended so that when any development does happen on this corridor, that it complies with what we're talking about. So these standards are met. But it's really just to put in place what you want so that when DOT sees these plans and the MPO takes them from you and hopefully gets them approved in the STIP for funding, that all this has already been thought out and the money that it would take to build this is properly accounted for so that you get the right amount of money to build the project. So with that, very large table. But basically, you can see on the right in red are the recommended standards. This column here is what the current Elon standard is. And then the one in the middle is the DOT Complete Street Standard. So for traveling with, as I mentioned, thirteen feet, which is the current Elon standard, is pretty wide. And that's not even when you're trying to allow bikes in it. That's your standard lane width. So we're recommending in this corridor, again, it's just this overlay district area, it would be eleven feet. And that's, like I said, it it's pretty standard of complete streets here. You can see eleven-foot urban area for complete streets. So sidewalks, we're recommending minimum of eight foot in the suburban zone or ten to twelve in the campus zone. And that's a little bit bigger than what you And that's a little bit bigger than what you have now. You have eight foot for commercial, minimum of five foot. And then you have twelve foot for activity center. So it's kind of a in-between a little bit. But that is in line with the complete streets. Multi-use path recommending twelve foot, not just eight. And that is because if you're going to multi-use path, that means you're not doing a sidewalk, you're doing a multi-use path instead. So it's going to have both bikes and and people walking. And the wider you can make it, the better, especially in high traffic areas and this is. So if it was a low traffic area further out, not as much traffic, you could probably get away with a ten-foot. Multi-use path and a lot of them are, but in this situation, we're recommending twelve. So for the bike lanes, we're recommending five to six foot, not just four. Or a fourteen to fifteen-foot share, which is a shared lane. So you could have one fourteen or fifteen-foot shared lane that allows bicycles that just aren't striped. It's not a striped bike lane, it's just a shared lane. Or you could have a five to six-foot travel lane. With an actual, excuse me, a twelve, eleven-foot travel lane with. An eight, excuse me. A four to five to six-foot bike lane, if I can get it right. Yeah, so you would have sixteen foot. Sixteen to seventeen foot, if you had a basic striped lane, you would have to have seventeen feet between the eleven-foot travel lane. And your five to six-foot strip lane. So that just gives you better protection for the bicyclist and the pedestrian and the car. So streetlights, we didn't really change much, except we just said equally spaced. And I think that the LMO consultant that you have, who is going to take all these recommendations and and find to them to them in your ordinance. They're going to have to come up with better standards and they should have the ability to reference some. Standard manufacturer lumens to get you that. But the basic goal here is that we want the light footprints for both streetlights and pedestrian lights to overlap so that it's a completely lighted area for safety. And then crosswalks, ten-foot, that's standard and then landscaping doesn't change from what it is now, which is one mature tree for every forty feet. So the only thing to mention, I think I did mention this, we only made a couple of changes at the of the draft document between the draft and the final. One was to change your. Let me go back up, I'll show you. Do, do. Yeah, one was to change the. Green zone, the planting strip from eight foot. To minimum eight foot. So it just said eight foot before, so it can go bigger than eight foot now. So we've changed it from just eight foot to minimum. That was one change and the other was just some wording changing to clarify why we went from. Or why we talked about the need to split the phases where we did. So with that, the only thing left is questions and answers and also consider the resolution to adopt the plan.
Thank you so much for that nice presentation. Do we have any questions with board members?
I have a question and I participated in this process. I found it interesting and engaging. One of the questions I have is obviously from the standpoint, we weren't able to do a traffic study, I understand that. But you think about Haggard, it's a wide street right now. And if we put a median from Antioch down to York. The challenge I see, I don't know anybody who's lived in a neighborhood that has to go right to go down to the street, turn around and left to go back the opposite direction. Is something they would love to endure. And I guess I wonder, the purpose of the median is is to slow traffic down. And protect people who come out of the driveways and leave the driveways. Just like when we have bike lanes, a bike lane is a lane that has a marking along the side of the road, right? And that's known, that's the that's the bike traverse. What if we did the same thing with the median? If we painted a median. And you narrow down the lane. Wouldn't that give you the same same result? But you don't, but you don't prevent people from going left or right as they leave and progress. From their property. I'm just concerned about, there's a lot of students there. That are going to either jump the curve. Or either it's going to go down the road faster, U-turn. And have to turn to somebody and that's, if you if you go down Church Street. Church Street's a good example. There's that section there near. All these. You know, so you see the businesses there and you see people who end up doing those U-turns and trying to navigate. And to me, that creates more hazards or inconveniences to people. I just wonder what the feeling was about creating a median that now you force people to go right nor to left.
I mean, I think that more modern neighborhoods, which we pretty much lack in Elon, this is pretty standard. I mean, everywhere in Charlotte, almost every neighborhood has a median right in the middle of the street. And if you live on one side. You have to go up to the next intersection to go the other way and it and the consultant can attest to this, but I think that's a safety thing. I think that there's plenty of science to back up that that is safer for both vehicles and pedestrians. I know when we did the, what was it, the complete streets thing with healthy elements, impact elements? That was one of the things they talked about was that you should have less driveways going. In opposite directions and it's part of the complete streets, you know, design and safety plans is because of that.
Pam, what are your thoughts?
I'm wondering if Michelle could quickly pull up the aerial imagery because I'm thinking about the portion of the corridor where where this is recommended right now. There are really not that many places to exit and enter the corridor.
In the university section, what I can talk about, I guess, from. The new dorms for the elementary school. That road could be widened somewhat, but as you see, the closer you get into the campus area, it makes it more prohibitive.
Right. Places to cross. That's that's what Michelle mentioned that would come out of for further traffic study. When we get into the sort of the the phases two and three where we're getting into more business area. I think we'll see less, less of this condition recommended because there will be a lot of need for folks to move. Without being, without the barrier of a median. But with that being said, for this area, I think it's very appropriate. You're absolutely correct. One of the reasons is for safety. The other is just is for aesthetics. UNCG did this several years ago on Spring, Spring Garden Road, right through, right through campus. And it completely changed the the environment for not just pedestrians and bicycles, but for the drivers as well. It's a much more pleasant environment to move through and it, but it does slow down traffic as well.
Yeah, one of the things I didn't, I don't have in front of me, but I have a really cool graphic that when we talk about this and other public venues. It shows you the number of conflict points. At different types of intersections and the highest one is a completely uncontrolled. Situation where you don't have any, any median. But when you have a median and you have the, you know, a controlled turnaround. It's much safer and you have the number of conflict points go down and the number of accidents go down, but this is not something that I don't think should hold you up right now. Because the plan itself can always say, and we can change this, that that median, especially in the suburban area. Which is, I think, where you're talking about, it's it's on the other side of Oak where it's a little bit more suburban traffic. We could always look at that again in the in the future with future studies and it would be done, by the way, in a traffic study, they don't just assume. Because your study says median, that that's the best plan. They'll look at traffic volumes, they'll look at speed, they'll look at accidents, they'll look at turn movements, they'll look at. The inconvenience, how many driveways, who's going to be there? The the side that makes it a good idea is the side that doesn't have a lot of driveways yet, which is the northern side. The south side, of course, you got all those residences and uses trying to get out. So it's kind of a mixed bag that, you know. There would be some, I'm sure, grousing about it as people do. And I've been in many a public meeting where people talk about how they're not going to be able to, you know, and they're not going to be able to get vehicles turned around and the school buses and. You know, that kind of stuff and that's not how roads are built. They make sure that fire trucks and. UPS trucks and even big rigs can get where they need to go. But and we've rolled curbs, we've made them so that if emergency vehicles need to drive over a median, they can, it won't tear them up. So they're not a, not a square edge, it's a round kind of curb. There's a variety of techniques that can be done. To design a median crossing that's a little less. Oderous, but and it can always be looked at in the future as an option. It doesn't have to be a for sure and and that's something that we can put in the plan. And talk about. Again, it's a.
Other questions? Board members?
Just had a quick one, Michelle. You mentioned the idea of that there's grants available to bury the overhead power lines. Is those from the state or federal?
I don't know about grants. I said, there's, there's, there's funding now that if you were to widen this or if you needed to do some improvements on this road. Because of the side of the power poles being in the middle of your sidewalk, you could show a need from from an ADA non-compliance standpoint, that's all in that. I don't know of any grant money specifically to underground power lines. I mean, I could try to look into that for you. There, there's always options. But and I don't know what, there may be some that have, you know, mobility issues like that where you have. The inability of people to use the sidewalk if they were handicapped because of the the intrusion of the of the poles. If that would give you some ability to get some money ahead of this project, I'm not certain. You might.
Thank you. Other questions?
Just a quick question about the median of that the person making a left, say, out of one side. When they turn, I'm assuming when they make that U-turn, that would be. Be curved, in other words, would allow the car more room to turn to go the other way, like you typically say.
Yeah, they call they're called bump outs. So, yeah, where 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 it's needed and where the traffic is warranting of it, if if they were to put a median in and you know that people need to turn around right there. Yeah, you'll see them and you'll see these little circular things on the other side of the road to give you that room without going over the curve to turn around.
I thought that was pretty standard.
Yeah, and these are all just guesses, by the way, that's why it says potential median break. Because we don't have the traffic to 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 look at which streets might warrant a break. It's not, it's not worth getting into which ones are and which ones aren't because this is just concept that. The idea of a median is really what needs to be evaluated going forward and then if it's proven to be a good idea, then you talk about where you put your brakes.
Other questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
You are welcome.
See, the next item on the agenda.
Would consider adopting the plan this evening, Mr. Mayor?
She coming back with some more stuff?
No, sir. Not unless there were unresolved questions. Looking for adoption this evening, but if there, but there, if there's a need to delay, certainly we can come back.
Have a motion to adopt?
This adoption. Make clear the ordinance changes as she asks, are we, we're not adopting that?
That that that'll come through a separate process when the new LMO comes to you for adoption. You have recommendations that she's making.
Have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Give yourself. Next item on the agenda, five oh one C three.
In your packet, you have all of the information, history of the downtown Elon development. How we got to where we are. What we found last year with COVID is it moved us a lot faster towards something that we were planning to, which is the development of a five oh one C three arm. That would be a quasi-public-private entity that allows. The downtown to take more action fiscally, whereas we can't do certain things with the town, the downtown, a five oh one C three would allow us to do that. So. For instance, offering grant money or things like that to the businesses, which we could not do last year. So. We have Main Street champion as she stepped up and did some things that we couldn't do as the downtown. Where the downtown advisory board voted on the nineteenth, their last meeting, they would like to create this five oh one C three as an arm of the. As the private arm of the downtown Elon Incorporated. You have the draft articles of incorporation in your packet. For you to review and then also the checklist. So through Main Street, they actually do provide a full. Walk you through process of how you create this and how to make that. Entity functional and stable and everything. So we are at step number one. So and I'm coming to you tonight just to.
Search some other municipalities.
We have six, out of the sixty-seven Main Street communities, there are twenty-eight that have the same style, including Burlington, Eden and Knoxville. And Burlington is actually switching now from a fully private five oh one C three to the quasi-public private.
A motion to approve. Are you asking us to approve something? No.
Right now, it's just discussion to answer any questions that you might have or anything like that.
Any questions?
I think that this will provide a lot of opportunity. I mean, you know, Gibsonville has their fall festival, which is used as a fundraiser for their organization. We could have done the frontline fund through the five oh one C three. And probably would have been even more successful. Because, I mean, one of the questions that I was asked by, I can think of. Three or four people right off the top of my head was, you know, if this was being raised by. An organization, my employer would match my contribution. So right there would have been, you know, additional funds that we could have brought in if it would have been, you know. Improved charitable organizations. So I think that this will really open up some opportunities to. Not, not just support the downtown businesses in different ways, but also for the downtown to fundraise some of the things that they need. And that could, you know, possibly take some of that off of the town as well.
We've just, we talked in our meeting, but I had to ask a question of what I mean is. God, it's that type of thing. We've got Main Street. So this is new to us, but we do have backing on Main Street.
Yes, and we do have legal counsel because this is not something you would want to do. You just sit at my desk.
Is the checklist provided by the Main Street program? Those are just. Things that can be considered. It's not recommended that you do all of those things, are they?
No, so just from the setup standpoint, so like the first couple of pages is really like that this is how you set up a five oh one C three. So you can make sure that you check all of those boxes. So you do become that actual charitable entity. Otherwise you skip a step and then you find out, oh, wait, I can't give you that letter that says you just made a wonderful donation to me. Then your employer might look at you and say, well, I can't match that.
There's a lot in there.
There is.
Potential salaries, liability insurance, liquor licenses.
There's a lot of stuff too, yes. It is a process that you start and then you deliberately go through it very slowly. We want to make sure that we do our bylaws correctly. You want to make sure that you give yourself enough flexibility with the board members. How do you do that? How do you set it up so that there's the one thing with five oh one C three is it is a completely separate entity. So unlike an advisory committee for the town. In our bylaws, we could write in the town alderman would appoint. To the board, but you can't appoint the whole board. So there are pieces to it that we want to walk through and make sure that we set it up correctly.
Right, right. There's just.
It's a lot.
Different things to consider and it all is going to be dependent on how you want to set that five oh one C three up and how you want it governed and.
And what you want it to do.
Want it to do. Right, so it's interesting.
Other question? Thank you. There are two more items we can discuss tonight. Y'all all received an email about our update of the COVID nineteen. Declaration. I think that hurt everybody. I think we were all indicating go with which government, yes. Davis, I think you were a little hesitant.
Well, yes, sir. I was, once again, as I demonstrated already, that I was erring on the side of caution. And that, that's okay. I mean, I absolutely understand what they have a point of view on their perspective and. Understand why they've got those points of view.
Did you want to add anything that, Mr. Rudner?
Oh, I'll just say that, you know, we're at that. Odd point of the year where we've got about a week left before the university graduates and students start leaving. Some of the, some of the students are finishing up finals this week, some of the seniors, I think. Some of the, some of the students are finishing up finals this week, some of the seniors, I think. If we move, you know, to, to relax the numbers or increase the numbers tomorrow. We're suddenly creating an atmosphere that has been in place in Elon on the past, but not for the last year or so. And you end it with, you end it with a population that would. Look very favorably upon one last big blowout weekend and whatever those ramifications may be. You know, so I, I guess, you know, your comment about moving slowly and I don't have a, a, a big problem with, with the numbers perhaps. I just, I, I'd raise the idea of whether, what the timing should look like, whether it should be immediate, whether we should wait a week. And, you know, move into, move into the summer with higher numbers and, you know, we're about next year, next year. But that'd be my, that'd be my comment.
Well, tell me again, where are we now with numbers ins, indoors and outdoors? And where do we go if we?
Currently, we allow twenty-five indoors and fifty outside. The governor's order as of today is one hundred inside and two hundred outside. From, so for a practical standpoint, from, you know, enforcement. You know, ten to twenty-five is, is, you can, you can eyeball that pretty quickly. You know, you get to fifty, that's a little bit harder. You, you're look, if you're coming in, you know, from the police department, coming up on a party and. Trying to eyeball whether there's a hundred students or there inside or two hundred outside, you, there's just no way that'll happen. And so from an enforcement standpoint, a hundred, two hundred. The, the way we've been addressing it, you might as well not have anything ultimately. So, like I said, you know, to me, it's, it's a question of timing, whether this is the right time to do it, whether the next week's a better time. Considering what's hap, what's going to be happening in this community over the next week to ten days.
What are the thoughts aboard?
Just a quick clarification. My, my. Note was meant to say that I agreed to the timing that Mr. Redner put forth, that we stay with the current limits. Until after the twenty-first, I think.
And next week.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And that, that was basically what I meant to say. I'm not sure if I made that real clear. Not, not to stay with it. Through the end of summer or to the middle of summer, but just through the, like, the twenty-first.
Congratulations on the twenty-second.
On the first, next Friday.
On Friday.
And you and I had a conversation. Have you had any of our citizens' remarks about our restrictions?
The only comment I've received was, I've let you know about was probably back in February, March. First nice days had, had what I, what I perceived to be a, a woman not in my age group asked me about. Getting together with a bunch of her friends and I explained our limits and she said, thank you very much. We're going to get together anyway. So, that's, that's been the only complaint I've received.
Do we have a motion from the board to say where we are or to move forward with the governor's name?
I would be fine with extending to the Monday after graduation.
I would be in favor of doing it now. All right, I think our students here have been awfully disciplined. I think they're not going to continue to be disciplined. I mean, I've seen them gathered now more than twenty-five. Is there something magical about going from fifty to seventy-five or a hundred that's going to be more protective or less protective?
It only takes one person having it to.
But we could shut down the whole town if we wanted to. We really want to be cautious. My concern is, why would we treat our residents any different than the rest of the residents of North Carolina? Because we're afraid of the university students not being able to protect themselves, which we know most of those have had the opportunity to be vaccinated. They've had the chance to do that, whether they choose to or not, and that's up to them. So, how long do we try to protect every citizen in our town? From the possibility that mayor may not have it.
So, you got, did you get feedback from our police chief about this? That it would be, the enforcement would be difficult? Is that kind of what?
I, I mean, you know, in that respect, yeah. You know, once you get above, you know, twenty-five, thirty people, it's really hard to eyeball what you're dealing with. You know, like I said, you, you come into a house or you go into a backyard and there's twenty-five people there. It's, it's relatively easy to, to count up that quickly. If, if the number, the trigger number is a hundred, two hundred, enforcement standpoint, you'll, they'll never have an opportunity to do that. Just people, even people just moving around. Think how hard it is to count the number of people in a, in a party. People just moving, milling around, talking and you can't do it because people are moving and the numbers keep changing. So, once you get much higher than where we are right now, from an enforcement standpoint, I think it's really difficult.
What's going to happen next year?
We'll go back to, to the way it's been in the past. So.
But you're going to have the same situation. You're not going to be able to.
Presumably, by next. If, if what the governor said follows through, I think he said that by June, he'd be, hi- his goal would be to get rid of all capacities. He wouldn't have those mass gathering limits and there wouldn't be an issue anymore. The numbers reported from the university last few days have been zero. For the last two weeks, they, there've been a couple of days where they've had one or two, yeah. They've all been studying, so we know they're not gathering.
Yep.
What were their limits of gathering before COVID? There weren't any. There were nothing. Police department didn't have to worry about it, did they? If, if we, my, I guess my only point is, you know, we talked about this earlier with the non-discrimination or the equality work. If there's an ordinance in place that we're charging the police to enforce. At a hundred and two hundred, there's no way they're going to be able to enforce that. That's, that's, I guess that's the enforcement aspect of it. They're not going to have an opportunity to walk in and say, oh, everybody freeze. One, two, three, four, five, there's not be able to do that. So, a hundred, two hundred, you know, there are sensors. Why bother? But there are limits. And I'm saying that if we have, if we're having limits. We can't enforce anything much higher than what we've got today because you can't count them.
I mean, the decision is ultimately yours. What do you think?
I'm mixed on it. I'd like to know what, Mark, thanks, and what do you think? On where I feel about that. I sent out an email asking to your opinion. And that's what I want to do.
I had, I did have one question that I asked the group and I put it in my note, but is there any potential downside? Or adverse effects for our downtown businesses by staying at the current limit?
All the downtown businesses come in a whole different set of numbers.
This is like a house party, essentially. You're talking about what you're doing in your yard or in your house.
I understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't any potential downside for our businesses.
I'm not aware of any potential downside, other than if people aren't having a party with three hundred people, they're not buying as many cakes, but.
I'll stick with what I said. We can just do it now. I mean, it is, they're going to have to, we're going to have to do it next year.
Yeah, so, so I wrote back that I was following the governor's guidelines. And, and I guess mainly is, for your question, Davis, does it affect us? And, you know, we are, businesses are different, right? One way I guess that it could affect, I mean, tangent doesn't have Don in right now, and I don't know how mass gathering necessarily. It would be deemed. But this past Saturday, if y'all didn't drive through town, the university threw down. There were students everywhere, all across the street. Have, having the doories, I think that the term is, day, day parties. And, you know, were there any complaints then, Mr. Redner? Did we have a, the police go out to us parties for? Occupancy this past weekend?
I, I did not receive any, any reports. I, I, I'm not aware of any.
And so then you look at it, the last day of exams is the eighteenth. And, and we noticed through the businesses, moving through the eighteenth. A slower demand of students, because you'll start seeing freshmen leaving and then sophomores, et cetera, leaving throughout the week. But then those four days before graduation, we have, they have roughly about fifteen hundred seniors that are, they're here on campus. And we're, we know we're going to see that the, the parties, right? And I'm, I'm, I'm indifferent with it because I do want to make sure. You know, we can function normally, as normal as we can, and we've been following the governor for, for a while, then we kept our own. And then I looked at it on one hand, you know, we have locals and the, the year-long residents that, that come through. They're not going to be coming through downtown for the next week or so, knowing that it's graduation and, and seeing, you know, if they saw what happened this past weekend. But if, if it's, if it's a matter of like enforcement, because we're going to have limits anyway, because the governor's going to have limits. And if we're trying to put some teeth into how to figure out to, but I can wait till. I'm, I'm okay with waiting till after graduation or right before graduation with, with people. But I can be swayed either way and luckily it's your decision, Mr. Mayor.
I feel exactly the same. I can go either way on this. I, I'd support you extending it through like the Monday after graduation, but if you just want to open it up. I think there's valid point.
Yeah, so maybe your community, you live in a twin-like segregated community. Has it prevented your residents from doing the things they normally would do because of our limitation? For example, indoor dining and all that?
We don't have indoor.
So, you don't even have indoor dining? And if a group wanted to gather indoors, they couldn't because there's only twenty-five.
They don't have mask gatherings.
They're not allowed, but they've all been vaccinated from those point, but they're not allowed to go.
Well, if you leave the decision up to me and listen to everybody, Mr. Redner will leave it like it is. Until graduation, after graduation. Okay, one other item. Do you have any reporters here? If you want to report on this matter, I appreciate it. We're going to recognize Ron Kleptik, and he didn't know anything about this, so I don't want. He's our.
He was like, he's. Say, off the record.
Hold the board and what we're going to do is name the playground. What most of y'all, I think, know now is that Ron was very instrumental in, in the playground and the thing. And if we, I think we've already gone, ordered the order of a long leaf pie, right? At our next meeting, why don't we award that? And.
At the June seventh or the June fifteenth meeting?
Through the seventh. And see if Amy Gailey would, would come and present that. We usually have a senator or representative do that. And I think Diane passed something out today, and I'd like you all, the three longest-serving members of the board have been Chuck Gantos. Who served the longest, about one year, and then Lawrence Slade, and then Ron. And I've been talking to. Al about doing something at the fire station with Chuck Gantos. He was a volunteer fireman. I think he was assistant chief for something like fifteen years down there, while he was serving on the board. So, with that. Well, we got next town manager, anything you want to add?
Just a couple of quick things. The Saturday, nine to noon, at Feschnett Park is our paper shred event. So, if you've got paper documents you want posed of securely, you can bring them down. They'll be taken care of. Go to the calendar on our website and click on the event. It'll give you all the details as to what you can bring, what you can't. Recreation Department has, has, has created a new portal on their website. If you, if you, the way I found it was you go to the facility rental and it'll take you to a separate site where you can actually do the rentals online. Pay for it online. They're going to start using it for registrations for their events and things like that as well. So, that'll streamline how people can take care of th- those activities with, through the rec department. I already commented about the longevity in our, our, our employees and it's a. People working in this location for any location for thirty-five years is impressive. Couple of dates, next Friday, the twenty-first is graduation. There's a couple of small programs are graduating prior to next Friday, five, ten, fifteen, twenty people, I think, one, maybe a fifty graduates. And then they're actually going to do three graduation ceremonies at Sharp, inside at Sharp Center over the course of the day on Friday. And Wednesday, May nineteenth, so it's next Wednesday. There is an event at Road Stadium that it will be including fireworks. So, for anybody who may be watching. Get your doggy tranquilizers early.
Having graduation in Sharp Center, they won't request to close Hager. They're not requesting to close Hager, no. Board members.
Uh, yeah, to thank Mitch and Misty for putting together a great budget. It's been a challenging couple of years and I think I mentioned before, last year, we put, had a budget and we had to. Make a one eighty there. So, thank y'all very much. That's a, a lot of work and effort and, and all the, the, also the. Department heads as well too. So, great job there. Appreciate that.
Mr. Ray?
Mr. Green said, and I'm glad to see in the budget, Misty, you're going to no longer have to use AOL in Windows ninety-six. Hopefully get the budget a little smoother in the financials in that regard. I do encourage you guys to, to read the emails from the other constituents. And we had eleven people speak today. And then there's thirty-five or more emails to, to just hear other stories from, from the community. I look forward to seeing what Emily and Davis can put together for, for the mannequin. Can't say the word ordinance right now. And, and I'm not going to be here. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be here on the seventh as well. I'm going to be out of town on vacation, so. Well, I'll be in Zoom for it. Really hate that I'm going to miss Ron Klepsak getting the long leaf on. And he was a, I'll say my words now, but he, he was, when I was deciding to run for the board, he was a, a very good and nice mentor for me. He always answered my phone call. He always went and got coffee with me and talked me through what it meant to be a, a board of aldermen. And, and I really do appreciate his time that he spent helping mentor and I think it's a well-deserved for Mr. Klep to. And he just told me to always remember him when I have seafood chowder. So, I called him up the other day and he came out and cleaned me out. So, I do appreciate him. Got one or two bowls. He asked for four quarts. I was like, that's all I have, Ron. Well, I'll take it. All right. And then, la- lastly, and, and I'll, I'll let it move. I, I know you were ready to leave, Mr., Mr. Mayor. But moving forward, guys, I, I do encourage y'all to, to learn as much as we can, right? Because it, like, like you mentioned earlier with this new NDO is, it's new. I have some resources I have if y'all would like me to share. I've spoken with a lot of commissioners and councilmen from municipalities that have passed it. And some of their experiences of what they've dealt with. I have talked to other council members from municipalities that are going through what we're going through right now. You know, people aren't completely against it, where they're just trying to figure out how, how to go. And I, I'll be more than happy to share these resources. And, and I just ask that we don't wait until once a month to, to discuss this. And, and we, as individual board members, are moving forward on our own time and doing our homework to, to learn about it. And that, I appreciate everybody. Appreciate you, Diane. Appreciate you, Kathleen.
And I appreciate you sending us those emails of all these.
Yes.
I've already read them all. I appreciate it. It made it much easier.
Yeah, yeah. So, and, and I figured I would put it in a document instead of just forward, 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 forward.
Thank you for that.
No, I think a lot has been summarized already. I do appreciate Misty's and Rich's job on the budget. It was not an easy task and I think it's going to be a good budget. And I think it's going to be a good budget, one that we can, can use it because of God and move forward. And I appreciate your work on that. Also, all those folks who we recognized during your service, that's, that's a testament of a place, a good place it is to work. They have opportunities to go elsewhere. They chose to stay here. And we're, we're fortunate to have good resources and valuable people like that. And I appreciate everything that we've done here on board and communicate. We made it all agree, but we, in a day, we realized we're working in the best interest of our town, so.
Sure.
Um, first of all, I'll never be able to think about going to Davis's house without seeing the mannequins that we have to dress. And I just want to say, congrats to our service award recipients. We always talk about how our town has the best staff and we're going to keep talking about that. And I also just want to bring everyone's attention to an email that we all received on May the first from Elon resident Greg Palmer regarding high-speed internet. I did reply to him and share that, you know, really, this is kind of above the town of Elon. But I would recommend that you all take the time to read it and consider reaching out to our state representatives, which I have done. I've heard back from both of them as well. But, you know, one voice is only as strong as one voice, but when we can all speak together. For those of us who work from home, which I've done for seven years now, our internet is really terrible when you think about how it compares to Greensboro and Durham. And it just like stops at the Alamance County border for whatever reason. And, you know, it, it, we're going to have more people working from home in our town. And that could be something else that people are like, if I'm going to work from home, I have to move to Greensboro or I have to move to Durham to get high-speed internet. And I think that it's something that we need to continue to advocate for in whatever way that we can.
I agree with, with Emily. I read the letter. I thought it was interesting, but I'm, how we get one gigabyte per second of internet without paying for it? And I know, as he stated in his letter, it's obvious, people who provide the internet choose based on density and payback. And that's, that's obvious. Some towns that have set up an internet service and a cable service, actually, they run it through the town. Hope for some money maker. Maintenance and electricity and everything else. The other thing I'll say tonight is, uh, I hope we all got a little uncomfortable tonight. And I think we did. That's not necessarily bad, that. I want to thank the board members that are here tonight. That's all the board members. For being able to work within the thoughts and the ideas that you bring to the, to our discussions. That diversity of input, that diversity of thought is exactly what we need. Just wanted to thank each of the board members. Yes, sir. Yours as well.
And I would like to, Mr. Rudner, for that good budget, no tax increase. That's always good. Like to personally congratulate all our employees in their service to the town. I think doing it. And with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I got motion.
Not a motion, or have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Now, Logan-